Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call together to order the city council meeting for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for February 25th, 2019. If you would please stand and join me in the pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the deputy clerk please call the roll?
David Cooter?
Present.
Zachary Urban?
Present.
Kristi Davis?
Here.
Janice Hoppy?
Present.
Larry Matthews?
Here.
George Pond?
Present.
Leah Dozeman?
Here.
We have no minutes to approve in our package tonight. We have no proclamations or ceremonies, so we will move right into our citizens' right to speak. This is for any item that is not on the agenda, and we've been working this week with our staff and our city attorney to try to clarify and make it easier on how we get people to sign up for either citizens' right to speak on items that are not on the agenda or on agenda items. So we've come up with a -- the green form is going to be for items that are not on the agenda. We also have items that are on the agenda, and those are back there by numbers, so we have a separate sheet for each item. So if you would, when I read your name, come on up and come to the podium and adjust the microphone so that we can hear you. We want to capture all of everyone's words, and I will give the on-deck speaker. In terms of the lights, there's a green light that will come on when the clerk has your name and address, so when you come up, if you'd give your name and spell your last name and give your address, when you're ready to speak, then the clerk will start the light. You have three minutes. It will flash when you -- the green light will flash when you have 30 seconds remaining. The yellow light will appear when you have 15 seconds remaining, and the red light will appear when your time is over. And if you would please conclude your remarks at that time, I would appreciate it. So our first speaker is Rambood Faradi, and Thelma Blessinger is on deck. Please adjust the microphone and give us your first name and last name, and give us your address, please.
First name is Rambood, R-A-M-B-O-O-D, and last name is Faradi, F-A-R-H-O-O-D-I, and the address is 4810 Wattsworth. So, hello, my name is Rambood, the property and business owner of World Class Cigars located at 4810 Wattsworth. The Wattsworth Expansion Project will alter my business substantially. In the latest version of the plan, I'm losing the direct access to Wattsworth, or worst-case scenario, I am going to lose my business and property altogether. I just want to explain something about my business. I'm a good taxpayer to the city of Wheat Ridge and state of Colorado. Running a cigar business is a tough business. That's why you don't see any new cigar stores established for the past 10 or 15 years. My business has survived all these years because of location and age of my store. That means in case I lose the direct access to my store, or if I have to move to a new location, my business, which is my only source of income, will not survive the big change. I would like to ask you to consider my business and my situation in the Wattsworth Expansion Project. I appreciate your time and attention. Thanks so much.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Thelma Blessinger and Bob Brazel on deck.
My name is Thelma Blessinger. I live at 4510 Carr Street, and I'm here to see if we can get a stoplight, a red and green light at 38th and Carr, because a party on the east end has built a fence up, and we have two lanes going west, and we have to kind of move out into the road a bit to see the second lane, to find out if it's safe to get onto 38th Knot going east. So it'd be a lot safer for us on the street, or anybody that's driving there, to have that light there, because the fence is on the people's property, but it's up high enough to where we cannot really see down to where the next stoplight is.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Mr. Goff, you have that 38th and Carr? Thank you. Our next speaker, Bob Brazel, and Chris Chidley on deck.
Yeah, Bob Brazel, 3830 Carr Street. That's one of my neighbors, and that fence is a real problem. That's not what I'm speaking about, but it is a real problem and should be taken down. I don't know about a light, but the fence needs to come down. I filled out the NSR survey, yeah, thing the other day, and I noticed that they have on there, you know, it's for citizens of Wheat Ridge and business owners, and anybody else who just happens to come to Wheat Ridge once in a while. Well, I don't think anybody who doesn't live in Wheat Ridge has any business with any input into what we do in this city. We're the stakeholders. We're the property holders, not somebody in Highlands, or Lakewood, or Arvada, or Golden, or Denver. We're the stakeholders. They have no, should have no input into this. It reminds me of when we did Create 38, if you all remember that, and we had the first meeting, and I went to that first meeting with one of my good friends, one of your neighbors, Mayor, and there were six of us, or no, eight of us at the table, and two of us were from Wheat Ridge, me and my friend, and everybody else was in the bicycle group from Highlands Ranch, trying to tell us what to do with 38th. So, you know, let's get our act together here and only get input from the citizens of this city as to what we're going to do with our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Chris Chidley and Missy R. on deck.
Chris Chidley, I live at 4020 Everett Street. I'm here again. An emergency ordinance and a vote to have flag lots require public hearings did not receive any approval last council meeting. Janice Hope requested more consideration on this subject, and that subdivisions less than three lots also be considered for public input. Please create a case study to debate this subject. The residents in my area of Wheat Ridge R1 were disappointed that no resolution occurred at the last council meeting. Please consider this subject in the NRS, which you're all quite familiar with. Thank you for your consideration. Good evening.
Thank you. Missy R. and Rick Ronnie on deck.
Hi there. My name's Missy, A-H-R's the last name, and I'm here regarding Jazzercise Wheat Ridge. We were renting at the Anderson Building, and after the renovation, we weren't going to be invited back, but the majority of my customers have been in contact with you guys last week and got me in contact with Joyce. Right now, we're just negotiating some class times, but I just really want to thank you guys for getting me in touch with her and having her respond to me, and if you guys know of any afternoon places that would like to help Jazzercise, let me know. But that's it, I think.
Thank you very much.
Cool. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Rick Ronnie and Sunny Garcia on deck.
Hi, thank you. I'm Rick Ronnie with 3910 Carr Street, and I'm here for a separate agenda item, which is the speed humps on the street.
I'll tell you what, if you want to --
But I wanted to say, add another thing concerning our street, that it's not part of the agenda, and that is that 41st and Carr Street, that intersection's fairly dangerous, and it's just a two-way stop, not a four-way stop, and I've heard accidents occur there, and I just wanted to add that to another concern on our block, and I didn't know exactly where else to put that but here.
That's fine.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Uh-huh.
Okay. Our next speaker is Sunny Garcia.
Hi. Sunny Garcia, 4304 Hoyt Street. I didn't expect that anybody would mention the NRS, but since they did, I just want to let them know that the survey is open until March 1st, so please take it if you haven't. I'm going to read this really long email address, or a website address, www.ciwetridge.co.us/nrs. So please go to the website and take the survey. Thanks.
Thank you. That's all of the speakers that I had signed up on my list. Is there anyone here that hasn't signed up that would like to speak tonight under public comment on any item that is not on the agenda? Okay, we will move forward. Are there any, we're at the approval of the agenda, is there any, anything, any changes to the agenda from the council? Okay. Ms. Dozeman, would you please introduce item number one?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Consent agenda item 1A, resolution number 13-2019, designating the City Hall lobby as the official public notice posting location, and the Wheat Ridge transcript as the official newspaper of general circulation for city publications in 2019. 1B, motion to approve the installation of a traffic calming device on Carr Street between 38th and 41st avenues in accordance with the Neighborhood Traffic Management Program. And 1C, motion to award the 44th and Youngfield sidewalk and drainage project and approve subsequent payments to Casey Colorado Inc., Sedalia Colorado, in the amount of $97,579, with a contingency amount of $9,760, for a total not to exceed amount of $107,339.
Thank you. Before I ask for motion on the consent agenda, does any councillor wish to pull anything off of the consent agenda? Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to pull item 1B.
Okay. If there are no objections, we will pull item 1B off of the consent agenda. Ms. Dozeman, would you please give me a motion on items 1A and 1C?
I move to approve consent agenda items 1A and 1C.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Deputy clerk, please poll the council.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Okay. Mr. Urban, you desire to pull item 1B off? Would you like to discuss item 1B?
My understanding is we had some citizens here that may want to speak to that, so I wanted to give them that opportunity to do so.
Okay. We don't normally take a citizen comment on items on the consent agenda, but one has been pulled off. Is there anyone here who would like to speak on item, consent agenda item number 1B, which is a motion to approve the installation of a traffic calming device on Carr Street between 38th and 41st Avenue? Yes, sir. If you'd like to speak on that, please come forward and give us your name and address.
My name is Rick Ronnie. I'm at 3910 Carr Street, and in the process of doing, or addressing the speed humps, which we're really excited about getting, I've noticed that there are a couple of different types of speed humps available for us for consideration, which are either the concrete with the stamp on top or the asphalt, and I find that the concrete would be a little bit more effective, and maybe a little bit more aesthetically pleasing, and not quite as high as the standard maybe is, is the ones down the street that have recently been put in. So if we can put in the request for concrete, I've had a lot of comments from the neighbors while collecting petition signatures that that was our preference, if that can be requested.
Okay, so, request for concrete. Mr. Goff, do we have any feedback on that?
Mr. Steve Wynn is here, who manages the Neighborhood Traffic Management Program.
Mr. Wynn?
Yes, concrete speed hump can be installed at the request of neighborhood. We have used both asphalt and concrete. It depends on residents' preference.
Looks like we have a concrete available, and unless I hear otherwise, sounds like we're going with the concrete speed hump. Assuming this passes the council? Okay. Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on consent agenda item 1B? Okay. Ms. Dozeman, may I have a motion on consent agenda item 1B?
I think Ms. Davis has the question first.
Ms. Davis?
I just have a question for Mr. Wynn. So when it comes, because I know we're working on the traffic calming, and I know we're also probably foreshadowing what might happen when Wattsworth starts happening and cutting through neighborhoods and stuff. I was in, was it Westminster, and I was going through a neighborhood, and they had some speed bumps, humps, whatever you want to call them, that looked more, I don't want to say disposable, but removable, like, you know, they had the same shape as the concrete, but they looked like ones that you could perhaps like drill into the street. Are you familiar with those?
Some what?
Okay. So I'm just wondering, is that something that we may consider as we look at some of the, maybe the traffic that's going to go through neighborhoods with the Wattsworth corridor changes and those types of things, or is there any consideration to those types of speed humps as we go through? I mean, I know there's budget restrictions on some of those more permanent ones, but, you know, it seemed very, not that I was speeding, but it slowed me, it slowed me down, so I just didn't know if that was another source of maybe traffic calming that's also a little bit fiscally responsible as well. Any thoughts on that?
You know, just to talk about temporary measure, I think we have looked at this in the past in terms of how feasible is it? What we learned is that it would take time to install it into the pavement and also to remove it. The effectiveness, we never had a chance to try it, and we can certainly talk to Westminster if they have tried it before and see how successful it is, but in terms of installation by our own crew, it would take more time to put it in than the permanent one.
Really?
Certainly, that can be looked at further if we want to move forward with that.
Okay. It's interesting, because it didn't look as if it would take more time, but perhaps it does.
Yeah, Mr. Wynn's right. I think we actually ordered a couple, several, five or six years ago. I don't know if we still have them, so they are something we can use, especially for a temporary measurement, or measure, if we're just trying to determine if that's the best application, and so we'll look into that further.
Okay. I was just meaning to ask, because I thought, wow, these are effective and perhaps, but maybe not cheaper.
Thank you, Ms. Dozeman.
I move to approve consent agenda item 1B, a motion to approve the installation of a traffic calming device on Carr Street between 38th and 41st avenues in accordance with the Neighborhood Traffic Management Program.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Would the clerk please poll the council?
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. That concludes item number one. Item number two, Mr. Matthews, would you please introduce item number two?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number two is resolution number 14-2019, a resolution establishing a street width for 52nd Avenue from Ward Road to Tabor Street, for Tabor Street from 52nd Avenue to Ridge Road, and for Ridge Road from Tabor Street to the city boundary east of Sims Place.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing, and it looks like we have a staff report by Mr. Westburg.
Sorry, I thought this was on. We'll have a staff report as soon as I get logged in here. out of date. Three streets, 52nd Avenue.
And Mr., just for the record, Mr. Westburg, would you please give us your name?
Yeah, Mark Westburg, Public Works Department, city of Wheat Ridge.
Thank you.
So we're here to talk about three streets, sorry, thanks Lauren. The screen wasn't on up here. 52nd Avenue, Tabor Street, and Ridge Road with the limits shown on this diagram. So our street width designation process is something that's in our charter and in our code, and the street width is measured from the face of curb to face of curb. The existing widths on all three of these streets vary a lot because of a lot of different reasons. Most of, in most places, it's very narrow. Towards the major intersections, they tend to widen out. Our proposed widths are a lot more consistent for both Ridge and Tabor. We have just really, for Ridge and 52nd, we pretty much have one width the entire length of the street. Tabor Street changes some, but the middle portion of the street is what we're going to use, and then the two ends are both shorter than the 300 feet that's allowed in the code for turn lanes and things like that. So this is a public hearing process. As you mentioned, the construction has to commence within one year of the street width designation hearing, which is the meeting tonight, and then we follow the process and procedures in the city charter for the notifications and all the things that we have to do to be here tonight with this public hearing. So for 52nd Avenue, our proposed street width is 35 feet from face to face of curb. The center turn lane in the middle is 11 feet wide, the two outside lanes are 10 feet wide, and then we have a two-foot gutter section on each side, so that's a total of 35 feet. And that's, this is the Ward Road end of it. Ward Road is this portion of the street right here, and so this is the beginning of 52nd Avenue, and as we head east on 52nd Avenue, that width stays very consistent the entire length. So we have 35 feet all the way down to where the improvements on 52nd end at Tabor Street. For Tabor Street, the width that's in the middle of this relatively short road is 38 feet. It does change a little bit as it heads south, which is this portion of the road. This is where Ridge Road is, because we add a center turn lane in here. This width allows for two through lanes of 11 feet each, and then parking lanes on both sides of eight feet each on each side. And then as we get up towards 52nd Avenue, there's a house here at the southeast corner of 52nd and Tabor Street that encroaches very close to the existing road. There are some actually concrete barriers out here, because when people come around this corner and it's snowy, people tend to run into the house, and so at the homeowner's request years ago, we put up some concrete barriers there. The right-of-way in that part of the world is a little bit in dispute, but even if we have the right-of-way where the house is, I'm not inclined to tear down someone's house to build a road. So we've shrunk the road down to the bare minimum of having just the two lanes coming up to 52nd Avenue. The on-street parking stops here on the west side, and then just off this diagram on the east, on the east side. And then Ridge Road, this is the entire section of Ridge Road. This is Tabor Street down on this end, the Tabor Street intersection, the RTD built for us a few years ago. This is our city boundary that's just east of Sims Place. This entire section is 43 feet wide. It's got a center turn lane of 11 feet, two through lanes of 10 feet each on either side, and then bike lanes of six feet wide on both sides, and so that gives us that 43 feet that we've got on that particular road. So pending the approval of the street width tonight, we're continuing to work on construction plans through pretty much the end of April. In March through the end of May, we're going to be working on a right-of-way acquisition. June through July, we'll be doing bidding and awarding, and we hope to start construction in August of this year. I'm an optimist, so I hope to start construction in August of this year, and we hope to finish sometime around the summer of 2020. That'll probably, by that time, will be cleanup and landscaping and different things like that. So we think being able to hit that one-year deadline is very, very doable, since we hope to start within about six or seven months from now. And of course, it's our 50th, so I just feel like we got to show that off a little bit. I've been playing with animation, sorry. It's kind of fun. So just if anybody has any questions on this, we can certainly, we can certainly do that. And then the one thing is if, is if the public had wished to protest any of these, they could have gotten a petition together, and they have until the end of this public hearing tonight to turn that in. I've not seen a petition or heard of a petition, so we'll see what comes out here.
Thank you very much. And before I go to questions of council, I want to open the hearing up to anyone from the public. I have no one signed up to speak on this. Is there anyone here tonight who has not signed up to speak on item number two, who would like to speak on item number two? Okay, we will move past the public speaking part of this and open it up to questions from council. Mr. Matthews?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question here, because the street width designation is somewhat of a straightforward issue. However, the 800-pound grill in the room, is what does that do to right-of-way acquisition? And I would certainly have preferred to, in addition to the signage sheets, had a right-of-way drawing in here showing the impact of our requested street width definitions on final right-of-way, including those areas along 52nd, where I think some of that property up there belongs to other jurisdictions.
So we don't have any right-of-way acquisition at all on 52nd and Tabor. We can fit all of the proposed improvements within the existing right-of-way, the permanent improvements. We will need to acquire some right-of entries or easements from folks, and we're going to start working on those pretty quickly. The only street we need right-of-way in is on Ridge, and that's on that north side of Ridge Road. We're still finalizing that, how much of that's encroaching. The street width is the lanes, and then we figure out what's happening behind the sidewalk. So I believe we're looking at 12 to 15 feet, I think, is maybe the number. We haven't gotten the final numbers from our designers or from the, from the right-of-way folks, who've been sort of finalizing some of the, how we design right at those intersections with some bulbous to try to keep the handicap ramps and stuff in the existing right-of-ways, so we're not having to acquire additional for those ramps.
I just hope you understand, this is kind of a chicken-and-the-egg deal.
Yeah, it is.
For us to go ahead and okay something that encroaches on somebody else's property without having those agreements in place, I don't know how that stands up, but I certainly would have liked to know what the impacts were. Luckily, because we've had several discussions here, I have an idea, but, and thank you for then explaining where the right-of-way issues are, but in future, if we're going to change street widths, I certainly think we ought to have the information of what the impacts are on right-of-way and the adjacent homeowners, or business owners, or whomever.
Sure. Yeah, the only, on some projects, that's a much more doable thing. On this one, there is a provision in the code that within 45 days, someone can turn in a petition to then require this to go to a vote of the people kind of thing, and we try to get that petition deadline done before we go out to bid. That's why we're doing the street width this early in the process.
Were the people notified, and how would they know they had a 45-day notice?
Everyone that lives along the street and is within that certain radius gets a mailing from us that's based on what's in the charter and in the code sections that deal with this, that outline that. There's a petition form that was then left in the city clerk's office that we gave to Robin, and so he had that available for people to come and sign, and then at the end of that notice, it talks about if you want to do this other thing. It's all spelled out in the language. We actually give them the charter sections to read.
Thank you, and that was kind of a rhetorical question.
Yeah, I understand.
I just wanted to make sure all the folks out there understand what the process is, because if I hear one consistent complaint about the way we do business is that we don't have transparency, so I wanted to let people know that we're not necessarily out here just mucking around in the dark.
Sure.
Thank you.
Additional questions for staff on this item? So before I close the public hearing, is there any additional questions for staff? I'm going to close the public hearing. A motion is in order.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me blow this up so I can read it. I move to approve resolution number 14-2019, a resolution establishing street width for 52nd Avenue from Ward Road to Tabor Street, for Tabor Street from 52nd Avenue to Ridge Road, and for Ridge Road from Tabor Street to the city boundary east of Sims Street.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the deputy clerk please poll the council?
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Ms. Davis, would you please introduce item number three?
Thank you. Council Bill Number 02-2019, ordinance approving a zone change from Residential 3, R3, to Plan Residential Development, PRD, with an outlined development Plan Residential Development, PRD, with an outlined development plan, ODP, for property located at 4,000 to 4,066 Uppam Street, case number WZ18-17 Ridgetop Village. This is ordinance on first reading, but it sounds like we're going to get — are you just — okay. I thought you were dropping it down.
Ms. Davis, would you please read what is at issue at this?
Sure. Great, when I don't have my glasses. Okay. The applicant is requesting approval of a zone change from Residential 3 to Plan Residential — oh, thank you — Development. I've made it bigger on the — woo, thinking with big screens. PRD with an outlined development plan for property located at 4,000 to 4,066 Uppam Street. The purpose of this request is to prepare the property for development of a 38-unit townhome project.
Thank you. This is an ordinance on first reading, which is to set the time for a public hearing on this. We do not take public comment at this time, but we will take public comment when there is a public hearing. So, Ms. Davis, would you please give us a motion for item number three?
Sure, thank you. I move to approve Council Bill Number O2-2018, ordinance approving the rezoning of property located at 4,000 to 4,066 Uppam Street from Residential 3 to Plan Residential Development with approval of an outlined development plan on first reading for the sole purpose of ordering it published for a public hearing set for Monday, April 8, 2019, at 7:00 p.m. in city council chambers, and that it take effect 15 days after the final publication.
Second. Mr. Urban got that one. But there was good competition on that. We don't take discussion on this. Will the deputy clerk please poll the council?
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Mr. Urban, would you please introduce item number four?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Bill Number 03-2019, an ordinance amending Sections 2-53 and 11-52.5 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning appointments to boards and commissions and the Liquor Licensing Authority at issue consideration of an ordinance permitting council to appoint out-of-district members to local liquor license authority in the event that no qualified in-district applicant supply, and requiring in-district appointments, if available, for all boards and commissions upon the expiration or vacation of an out-of-district member's term.
This is an item on first reading. The purpose of first reading is to set a time and a place and a date for a public hearing. We do not take public comment on first reading. Mr. Urban, would you please give us a motion on number four?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Council Bill Number 03-2019, an ordinance amending Sections 2-53 and 11-52.5 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning appointments to boards and commissions and to the Liquor Licensing Authority on first reading, ordering it published, public hearing set from Monday, March 25, 2019, at 7:00 p.m. in the city council chambers, and that it take effect 15 days after final publication.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We do not take discussion on this. Will the deputy clerk please poll the council?
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Mr. Keter, will you introduce item number five, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number five, motion to approve appointments to boards and commissions. The city's boards and commission seats are due for appointment. The positions were advertised in the Wheat Ridge transcript and on Channel 8, Facebook, and the city's website. Current members were contacted by mail and asked if they wanted to serve another term. All applications were received and compiled by the city clerk's office and forwarded to the city council.
Thank you. I have one person signed up to speak for this on item number five, Melissa Antol.
Good evening, council members. I just wanted to take this opportunity to introduce myself. I applied for the planning commission, District 3 representative position last year. Unfortunately, I was not selected, and I have submitted my application again for this year. And so, I just wanted to put a face with the name and just really quickly tell you why I'm interested in applying. Oh, I'm at 3540 Holland. I forgot to say that. I really think it's an exciting time to be in Wheat Ridge, involved in planning, particularly with the neighborhood revitalization strategy, and thinking about kind of all the potential decisions that could involve for our community and how we want to approach the future. By way of background, I am a — I have a master's degree in urban and regional planning, and I worked in local government for over 20 years, working in long-range planning and transportation planning. In the past several years, I've become a consultant to local governments, working on community development and organizational effectiveness. So, I feel like I could bring a lot of technical expertise. But as an individual, I'm just really proud to be living in Wheat Ridge and want to, you know, help advise in the best way I can in how we kind of embrace or approach growth in the future in kind of the most balanced way possible. So, we're honoring both the people that have lived here a long time, but then also acknowledging that we are growing, and how can we do that smartly and sustainably for the future? So, just wanted to introduce myself, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. I don't have anyone else signed up to speak. Is there anyone else here who is not signed up who would like to speak on item number
Good evening. Ehor Figlus, F-I-G-L-U-S, 9775 West 36th Avenue. I think you're probably all aware that I had submitted my application for planning commission in District 3, but apparently through a glitch in the email at the Wheat Ridge offices, my application didn't come in in time to be published with all the other ones in the agenda. So, I wanted to just mention that and let you know that I'm here. I, as you know, I've been attending several council meetings recently, and I've really become aware of how important it is to have citizen input into proceedings and to work with city council. You guys have a tough job to do, and I think that the planning commission does a lot to support your work. And I want to be part of the community and working for the community. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Figlus, your application was provided to the counselors. Is there anyone else who is not signed up to speak on item number five who would like to speak at this time? All right, we will move past public comment. And Ms. Hoppe, would you please provide motions for appointments to District 1?
My pleasure, Mr. Mayor.
Point of order?
Yes.
I'm sorry. It's a technical item, but I noticed that the application for Julian Stern has no signature. Does that make a difference? Is it an incomplete application?
Honestly, in my opinion, that's an insignificant error. As long as we know that it was submitted by her, the fact that it wasn't signed, I think is something you easily waive.
Thank you, Mr. Dahl. I have no objection. I just wanted to
Thank you.
bring it to the forefront.
Ms. Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to appoint — I'm going to do all the appointments in one. I move to appoint Betty Jo Page to the Board of Adjustment, term ending 3/2/2022. Nicole Larson to the Parks and Recreation Commission, term ending 3/2/2022. Jahi Simba to the Planning Commission, term ending 3/2/2022. And Michelle Coons to the Renewal Wheat Ridge, term ending 3/2/24.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Will the clerk, deputy clerk, please poll the council?
Motion carries seven to zero.
Ms. Davis, would you please introduce the motion for District 2?
Yes, thank you. So, District 2. I — let's see. I move to approve David Coons for Board of Adjustments, term ending 3/22. I move to approve Robert Phillips for the Building Code Advisory Committee, term ending I move to approve Anthony Devia for the Liquor Authority with the term ending 3/22. And also, I move to approve Scott Ohm for the Planning Commission with term ending 3/22.
Second. Pardon me. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Will the deputy clerk please poll the council?
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Mr. Pond, would you please make the introductions and motions for District number three?
I will, with just one interruption. I just want to notate that I will be moving to appoint Rocco Germano to the Liquor Authority Board, who's in — not in District 3. I know we just had that item preceding this, but I just want to let everyone know that I'll be making that one anomaly to the otherwise all District 3 appointees. So, I move to appoint Rocco Germano to the Liquor Authority Board, term ending 3/2 — sorry. Yeah, that's why I just wanted to bring that up and make sure that
The — that particular ordinance isn't effective yet.
That's what I was wanting.
So, we don't have the ability yet to appoint out-of-district appointees to the Liquor Authority. Soon will, once that ordinance has been passed.
So, I will skip that one.
You can skip it, leave it vacant, wait, put it on the agenda when the ordinance is effective.
Thank you. I move to appoint Melissa Antol to the Planning Commission, term ending 3/2/22. And Tim Rogers to the Renewal Wheat Ridge, term ending 3/2/24.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Point of order, sir?
Yes.
If we don't agree with those two names, we probably need to separate them out. Is that — would that be the way to handle this?
Mr. Dahl?
Sure, it's always proper to divide a motion where the motion addresses more than one topic.
So, is that a motion to divide the motion? Or is that — is that just an administrative function?
Well, you have a single motion on two topics. I think you have to move to
Okay.
to consider them separately unless the maker of the motion withdraws the motion, as does the second, and then we just have new motions.
I'll withdraw my motion and redo.
Okay.
Does the second withdraw?
I agree.
Okay.
I moved to appoint Melissa Antol to the Planning Commission, term ending 3/2/22.
Second.
Is there discussion on the motion? Will the deputy clerk please poll the council?
Motion passes six to one, with Matthews abstaining.
Mr. Pond?
Thank you. I move to appoint Tim Rogers to Renewal Wheat Ridge, term ending 3/2/24.
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Will the deputy clerk please poll the council?
Can we do that one over, please? Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Mr. Matthews, would you please make the motions for District 4?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to appoint Cynthia Shaw to the Liquor Authority Board, term ending March 2, 2022.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there discussion on the motion? Will the deputy clerk please poll the council?
Motion carries seven to zero.
At-large appointments. Ms. Dozeman, would you please make the at-large appointment nomination?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to appoint Julian Stern to the Board of Adjustment, term ending March 2, 2022. And I move to approve Sunny Garcia, or appoint Sunny Garcia to the Election Commission, term ending 3/2/21.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there discussion on the motion? Will the clerk
Pardon me, sir. Do we need to separate those out, please?
Will the maker of the motion please
I move
Withdraw the motion?
Yes.
And is the second okay with withdrawing the motion, and we will separate those out?
Yes.
Okay, would you please do those one at a time?
I move to appoint Julian Stern as an alternate to the Board of Adjustment, term ending March 2, 2022.
Second.
Is there discussion on the motion? Will the deputy clerk please poll the council?
Motion carries seven to zero.
Ms. Dozeman?
I move to appoint Sunny Garcia to the Election Commission, term ending March 2, 2021.
Second.
Is there discussion on the motion? Will the deputy clerk please poll the council?
Motion carries six to one, with Matthews abstaining.
That should conclude item number five. Mr. Pond, would you please introduce item number six?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A motion approving the revised council rules of order and procedure dated February 25, 2019 at issue is in consideration of the amendments to council rules of order and procedure.
Okay, council, this is — we have been working on the past on revisions to the rules, and you have both a redlined copy and a clean copy. And before we go to the rules, I would like to open it up for any public comment. This is item number six. I don't have anyone signed up to speak on this, but is anyone here who is not signed up who would like to speak on item number six? You may come forward now. Okay, don't see anyone. Let's move to council discussion. Do we have discussion on the rules? Mr. Matthews?
Thank you. I went through this, and I just went to the clean copy, so if you'll bear with me, I'm on page four. Are we in — I guess I want — I'd like to address a couple of these things one at a time. Based on an email we received from Chief Brennan and from Mr. Goff, item 4B, even if there's foul language, are we in some kind of liability if we don't let somebody speak their piece?
Well, probably it's best to say that foul or threatening language is not permitted, is discouraged. There have been enough cases around the state where, you know, people are speaking foul language but not otherwise threatening, or moving away from the podium, threatening the physical safety of council members. And while it's repulsive, it's the First Amendment, and we respect the First Amendment. So, it — this is a language that's been in our rules for a very long time. It's not ever been an issue, frankly, but to the extent it ever were, I would opine that someone who's using foul language while we don't enjoy it has that right under citizens' right to speak. Threatening language, I think, should remain in where it is because that departs from just the First Amendment right and enters an arena where you are not permitted to use your speech to disrupt a public meeting. And threatening language, depending upon the context, could do that. So, it's probably best to just delete the words foul or. And that'll accomplish our goal. I appreciate your bringing it to our attention. Other comments?
Okay, moving on then to Section, page five on B, 3, the mayor pro tem's duties, and it says the mayor pro tem shall have the authority to remove any item from the agenda. And my question there is, should we have some limits on that? I mean, if it comes out on Thursday night, can the mayor pro tem remove — do we allow the mayor pro tem, any mayor pro tem, to remove an agenda item two days later or something on Saturday or Sunday with no notice to the council and people that are planning on coming to speak to it? And, you know, they show up, and here we are, and then all of a sudden, we say, well, it's been removed from the agenda.
That's a policy call for the council. This structure has been in the rules for some time, and the two exceptions to the mayor pro tem's power to do that are, as you see, items that have been placed on the agenda by two council members, the mayor and one council member, or an item added during any meeting by a majority voter of the council. But you're right, aside from those exceptions, the mayor pro tem has the right to remove other items. If it's council's consensus to add additional exceptions to the mayor pro tem's removal power, now's the time to talk about it.
Ms. Hoppe?
As I read this, it's — as like the proceeding procedures go, is there's a meeting earlier in the week with in the week with, where we look at what the agenda would be for the following meeting. And so, I see this as in that meeting while setting the agenda, if there was something on the agenda that was staff, that was scheduled for the agenda that the staff's maybe not necessarily prepared for, or that, say it's a study session, and a city councillor asked for it, and we had scheduled it for that day, but then we don't have like the backup information for it yet from the councillors that placed it on there. So, I would say if we add language that just says, the mayor pro tem shall have the authority to remove any item from the agenda of any regular meeting or study session before it's been post-delivered or posted, or before it's been delivered to council?
That would be my intention, once it's delivered, though. That was my question, is once it comes out on Thursday and it's published on the website, I think it should be handled then under changing the agenda at the beginning of the meeting.
That's what I was...
And not jerked over the weekend.
Yeah, and then my next point was going to be that anybody up here can request to remove something from the agenda once it's been posted. So, maybe if we just add the words prior to public posting?
At the end of the last...
Before publication?
Certainly, you could say, remove any item from the agenda, regular meeting or study session.
Before publication.
Prior to packet delivery, council packet delivery and posting, because those are the two.
More than satisfied with that.
Does that work? Prior to council packet delivery and posting?
Is that as good as before publication?
Yes, if...
I think before publication is just less words that says the same thing.
Sure, it's fine, as long as that's about the same time as council gets their packets. You want it to more or less be the same. Sure, all right, good.
Okay, then, is somebody else, or I've still got more, so...
Are there other, you may continue.
Okay. On page six, item 4A, 4A4, mayor pro tem may schedule additional study sessions to take place at any day and time. I know we have seventy-two hour notices on some things. Is this at odds with that, or should there be some kind of prior notice statement included in this?
Well, if there's another study session scheduled, we'll still have to provide a notice under the open meetings law, and so...
This seems, this just says at any time of the day, any other day in time.
Certainly, but a scheduled meeting still needs notice, and other rules will require that notice.
Then we should probably refer back to that section of the rules that says what the notice requirements are.
You could certainly refer to Rome numeral four E3, I think. That's the normal posting schedule, four E3.
That's what I'm saying, is would you want to add something at any other day or time as provided in these rules? That would be fine, just something that acknowledges that this rule three exists, that the other one doesn't just stand alone.
I hear that, although I will say four E3 says all meetings must be preceded by public notice. So, it's all meetings of five members must be preceded by notice. I mean, that's a, that rule is pretty broad.
Okay. I'm not militant on this, it's just, I think a thought that should be tied together. And then, since we're all already down there at page seven, at E3, what are the requirements for notice for a special meeting?
Special meetings and emergency special meetings, I think, are in the charter, if I'm not mistaken. I can look. If you give me a chance to do that while you're talking about the next item, that'd help.
And I'm quickly running out of gas. No, just me. On page 11, section E, public hearings, item one, there's a sentence in there that the presiding officer may impose a limit on individual speakers' time in the event the number of persons signed up to testify justifies this, besides kind of a dangling something on the end with this. I don't know if it's a participle, but what justifies, do we need to clarify what justifies invoking that, you know, taking away speakers' time limits? How do we justify it?
Ms. Hoppe?
I actually had a note on that one, too. I think I had written in, but I put it on the redlined ones. Either A, we end it at that the presiding officer may impose a limit on individual speakers' time, period, or we say the presiding officer may impose a limit on individual speakers' time in the event that the number of persons signed up to testify or in need of time management constraints to complete the meeting justifies this. So, my example would be if it's 10 o'clock at night, and even if we only have seven people signed up, if they're limited, then we're at 21 minutes, and we have two other things on the agenda. If we're attempting to complete our business by 11, as is in our rules, then that would justify it. But if we only have one thing on the agenda and we have 40 people signed up, then that's a lot of people, but the time constraints wouldn't necessarily justify it. So, that's, that was kind of where I was thinking with that.
Mr. Pond?
Yeah, to that point, I think I would agree to end the sentence after speakers' time. I think that, you know, what we're trying to say is the presiding officer has discretion to limit individual speakers for various reasons, and there's too many and too many variables to probably try to clearly describe that in this, and so I would prefer to stop it there.
I would agree with that.
We haven't been taking any consensuses on these changes. Do we want to do that as we go?
You know, we had two so far, right?
Mr. Matthews had two. We had one, we're taking out the word foul language, foul. Was there consensus on that? Or foul, foul or?
Can we get a consensus on the taking out foul?
Okay.
And the other one was the...
So, you want to, Mr. Dahl, is it more convenient for us to do this by consensus on items?
I'm getting the sense that as we're disposing of them, there isn't really any objection to the amendments, and so my inclination would be when you get to the motion approving the whole works, that motion is to approve it with the following amendments as listed, one, two, three, four, five, and then you're done.
Okay. Then we have, so far, I'm tallying a deletion of the words foul or in two, A4B, and adding before publication in three, B3, after the word with. And then tell me again what the modification was to, at the public hearing on page 11. We were going to delete it at, where were we going to draw the...
Yeah, period after, Janice, you got it?
After the, so the first sentence would end after the word speakers' time?
The second sentence.
The second sentence, okay, yeah. And delete the words in the event the number of persons signed up to testify justifies this?
Correct.
Okay. Are there other discussions on the rules?
I'm on empty.
Yeah, we got you your destination.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Urban?
I had a question about our request of the citizens at the Citizens' Right to Speak when we ask them for their name and their address. That's not really listed anywhere in our rules, and so I don't know if it's necessary to spell that out, or if that's just sort of a customary thing that we're doing, or do we need to delegate that or delineate that in some way?
You know, that's sort of a usual and customary thing that we've done here for a long time.
And I think I would leave it that way because there may come a time where someone says, I'm uncomfortable doing that, and I know that the chair will say that's fine. And if we have a rule, then we have to go through some exercise of waiving the rules so they don't have to give us the address. I think I would follow the custom, and I think that works.
And then, my other question, this is more for the city attorney, with respect to public hearings. It indicates that council should refrain from communicating with each other, the applicant, or the public prior to the hearing, but it doesn't indicate anything regarding communication between council members or receiving outside information during the public hearing, for instance, looking up at a Google map, or, you know, that's the most innocuous way to look at that, but information that is received during the public hearing that isn't made public.
That's become an issue in other communities, and some communities have established rules around it to say that their council members won't be during public hearing accessing, you know, sources outside of the material being presented. My perception, and we could certainly try to craft a rule, my perception is that the communities that have done a rule on that have found it to be a problem, and that they really need to solve. It came up on the Attorney's List serve a few weeks ago. It's not yet been a problem here for this council. I guess I'd be inclined to allow that to develop, and until it's really a problem, I'm not sure it needs that kind of fix. I'm sensitive to the issue, and I think council members should be sensitive to the issue, not only for the sanctity of the hearing, but the perception out in the audience of the degree to which council members are really paying attention to the speakers and to the issue rather than something else. But of course, you have to look on your screens, to look at materials, and I think the audience understands that. My suggestion, we can certainly try to craft a rule around that. Other cities have, but at this point, I'm not sure it's needed yet.
Thank you. And then my last question is regarding a previous discussion around a code of ethics, and whether a code of ethics would be appropriate within these rules, or whether it needs to be a standalone document.
It's going to need to be a standalone document. It should be adopted either by resolution or ordinance, and I'm having that prepared right now. And in fact, I sat down with an associate in my office two days ago and went over the items. I think what I'm going to do is bring to council sort of a bullet point list of what I think the elements of an ethics code should be before it's drafted into an ordinance, but it will need to be an ordinance that we'll put in code in order to take advantage of our ability to preempt the jurisdiction of the Independent Ethics Commission.
And this isn't necessarily on this topic, but on that topic, is that code of ethics for all elected officials within the city, or all staff, or what's the...
As presently drafted, it'll be all elected officials and appointed men and staff. Now, obviously, when you get down to the snowplow driver, there's less need to have rules in place, but you will need those rules for your executive staff and for your appointed officials as well. It'll vary, and not all the rules applicable to elected officials will have to apply to appointed staff. But we're intending to bring a pretty complete but lean list of, kind of bullet point list, and get agreement from the council on the elements, and then we can write it up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there further discussion on the rules before I call for a motion?
Councilmember Matthews asked me to check on the special meetings, emergency special meetings. That's addressed in Charter, section 5.2. 5.2A requires notice of a special meeting to be given to the council members 24 hours ahead and posted and on the website. Emergency special meetings are just required to be given to the council, but there's no ahead-of-time posting requirement, and I wouldn't advise it. It's an emergency, and we want to be able to just meet. So, I believe that emergency special, emergency, special meetings, emergency special meetings are handled by the charter. There's a rule, and I think it's sufficient.
And my question would be, would it just be germane to put that into our rules so that someone doesn't have to go check due places?
Sure, after, at the bottom of page seven, top of page eight, where it says, with the exception of special meetings and emergency special meetings per Charter 5.2.
That's fine, whatever.
Okay.
But everything is really per the charter, right? We have a general note at the beginning that says that all of the, all of the rules conform to the charter?
That's absolutely true. If, I think it's probably fair to make a distinction around notice, honestly, and because notice is particularly important, and you have addressed notice in fairly specific terms for different kinds of activities and meetings and hearings. So, it's, I would say, not at all inconsistent to make reference to the charter for that purpose.
Okay, and so where would that insertion be?
It would be at the top of page eight, after the first word says meetings, add per Charter 5.2, Charter section 5.2.
Yeah. And give me that charter.
5.2.
5.2, so that looks like it is on four, E3, after the word meeting in the... Looks like it's still the first sentence, yes. It's a long sentence. Is there further discussion on the, Mr. Urban?
I had a question about the suspension of the rules, and how that relates to, if you have four council members meeting, and they, in that meeting, vote to suspend the rules, does that fall into the, does that somehow violate the Charter or the Code of Laws, or when it indicates that three-fourth majority of the council members present can suspend the rules, how would that work?
Well, the rules are really your own, your own animal and your own set. They don't, to allow them or not allow them is not something that's governed at all by the charter or by other code sections. So, that you are free to write within the rules your rule for when you would suspend them. So, the language about entire council doesn't apply here. It's what you're saying here, and three-quarters of council members present. So, just to suspend the rules, in each case, you just do the math and take three-quarters times whatever quorum you have present, and that would be the number you would need to suspend them. I don't believe it needs to change. I think it operates, it's clear and can be operated as it is.
Thank you.
Additional discussion on the rules and procedures. Mr. Pond, will you provide us a motion on item number six?
Thank you. I move to approve the revised Council Rules of Order and Procedure dated February 25th, 2019, with the following amendments. In section 2A4B, remove the words foul and. In section 3B3, add before publication after the word study session. In section 4E3, add per Charter 5.2, after the word meeting in the first sentence. And in section 5E1, end the second sentence after speakers' time.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Matthews was the first one on that one. Okay, do we have discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the deputy clerk please poll the council?
Motion carries seven to zero.
That concludes the agenda items that we have on the agenda. City managers' matters, Mr.?
Nothing this evening, Mayor, thank you.
City attorneys' matters?
Nothing tonight, thanks.
Nothing tonight. Elected official matters, Mr. Matthews?
Thank you. Just two items of note here. Mr. Goff, I've been getting copies of correspondence on the Jazzercise issue, and I'd like to stay in the loop on that and see, make sure we can help. You know, if we've had people doing that for 30 years and they've been just consistently showing up, I'm not sure why we would want them necessarily, you know, cut their program in half. And so I'd like to just be in the loop, and if I can help mediate there a little bit, I'd be more than happy to. And I've not given up, also, just a fair warning to everybody on the dais, I've not given up on flag lots and minor subdivisions and administrative subdivisions. Because we have a couple of meetings tonight, I'm not going to go into it, but I'll be back. Thank you.
Peter?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Urban?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Dozeman?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Hoppy?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Davis?
I just want to thank all those folks that have applied for boards and commissions for District 2. They make it easy for us because everybody applies. It's tough because, you know, it's kind of good news, bad news, because we don't have, you know, people aren't held to so many terms, term limits. So it's tough, but it's one of those things that it's kind of feast or famine, so you hate to put term limits on them because then sometimes you struggle to get folks. And so, but I want to thank everybody for that. And I think that's all, thanks. Oh, the gala tickets. So we have, how, Mr. Goff, how much longer do we have for gala tickets?
Until, I believe, let's see, what is today? Today's Monday. I think through the week, through Friday. Yeah, the gala is this Saturday.
It's the 27th.
27th? Wednesday, oh, I'm sorry. Who's, oh, I'm sorry, you got a commission, you got a, yeah. So there you go, Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Yes.
And it's a week from Saturday.
It's this Saturday. It's this Saturday. This Saturday. Yep.
Mr. Pond?
Nothing tonight.
I would like also to thank those citizens who stepped forward for boards and commissions. And I have nothing further. We will have a study session after this, so we will adjourn this meeting.
Sorry, but our new treasures in the audience, we should have them step up.
I, okay.
I just thought we could, should I invite him up? I just didn't know if he knew. He might have a matter he wants to speak to.
Then I will ask our treasurer if he has any elected officials' matters to discuss. Okay, he does not? So, thank you very much for alerting us to that. So with nothing further, we will adjourn this meeting and start our study session about five minutes. Thank you.
Okay, I would like to call to order the special study session for the city council for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for February 25th, 2019. We did not dispatch with public comment on agenda items, so I would like to, let's see, Mr. Dahl is going to see if we have a sign up sheet for the study session. And...
I'd like to see your sign up sheets.
Oh, thanks.
Janice Thompson signed up.
That's, okay, thank you. Janice Thompson, okay. I have one speaker signed up for the special study session, Janice Thompson. If you'd like to come forward and go to the microphone and give us your first name and last, and give us an address, and then you may continue.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Janice Thompson. I live at 12290 West 42nd Avenue. A few weeks ago, I heard a radio program about safe injection sites in Vancouver. And I had emailed Leah about this, and it's a concern to me because it's like everything else, I would rather see us be proactive than reactive. And I know that Denver City Council voted, I think it was 12 to 1, to pass an ordinance to allow a pilot program for safe injection sites. The Colorado U.S. Attorney's Office published a joint statement against this. And then what I had read and had heard is that there's a possibility that the state legislature might take this up after the first of the year, in January. Whether it happens or not real soon, it's kind of like marijuana. Everybody thought, oh, we're not going to have marijuana shops, we're not going to have any of that, and we have it. The safe injection sites in Vancouver, people are saying, well, it's just a bunch of people are hysterical about it and crazy. These people went up, they were from a radio station, went up there and visited these sites, this particular site. It's on Hastings Street in Vancouver. And if you go onto your internet and you just put "safe injection site Vancouver," you can put "Hastings Street," anything like that, and it will come up. You can listen to the people, they're making the money running these sites, and they will give you the flow charts and everything, saying this is a wonderful thing. But the pictures and everything that goes on around these sites is not pretty. You can go in and shoot up, and if you overdose, they can give you Narcan, and they can bring you back to life, you know, and it's all wonderful, and then you're sent back out on the street again. The area around these sites, there's a police station a block away, and they drive by and people are doing drug deals on the sidewalk and doing all this stuff, and they just kind of turn a blind eye against it. And it isn't a good thing to have. And so, all I want to do is encourage Wheat Ridge, if you ever consider this, or if you're ever approached by someone that wants to put a site in here, and if our legislature says, yes, we can do these things, I would suggest that we send our chief of police and our mayor to Vancouver and to visit these sites and to visit the area. And then you can make an educated vote on this. It will impact our police department and the neighborhood around these. So, I know that this is kind of crazy to bring up something that hasn't been brought up to the city yet, but I do want to see us be proactive versus reactive. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That was the only speaker that I had signed up. Is there anyone here who has not signed up who would like to speak on any agenda item in the study session? May do so now. Okay, we will close our public comment.
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, yes?
Could I make a, respond to her, please?
You may.
Thank you. Our tentative adjust, our tentative agenda schedule showed that we were going to talk about safe injection sites tonight. And so, I started a while back preparing just what you were talking about with all kinds of information about Vancouver and some people that did visit that site. So, I'm not going to take a lot of time tonight because I've been told that it's probably not going to come up, it's going to be a little different topic, but I appreciate your concerns and I share them. So, thank you for coming.
Thank you. I will go to our first item of discussion on the agenda item is city council District Three candidate presentations. We have a vacancy that has occurred due to the resignation of Councilor Tim Fitzgerald, and we advertised for citizens to fill that vacancy, and we've received one application from Ms. Amanda Weaver. And I believe Ms. Weaver is with us today, and I'd like to invite her to the podium if you would like to come up and give us a brief presentation and maybe take a few questions from council. Thank you so much for joining us tonight.
Do I need to give you my address?
If you would, please.
I'm not often on this one.
You know, we've...
All right. It's 11100 West 38th Avenue.
Thank you.
And I'm Amanda Weaver. Thank you for having me come up today. I applied last, let's see, I guess the deadline was last week, and decided to submit my application for District Three for the position that was open. Just a little bit of background about me, I know that you all have my resume and answers from questions, and I'm happy to entertain any answers for things in that. But I think a lot of people only know me as the farmer on 38th, and I'd like to expand a little bit, just so you know a little bit more about my background. I came to Colorado in 2001 and have been working at the University of Colorado Denver since then, actually since 2004. In 2010, I came out to Wheat Ridge and bought the farm. And some of you know the history of that, but from some historical characters here in Wheat Ridge, from Louise Turner, and had a wonderful apprenticeship with her while I was finishing a dissertation. And once I bought the farm, I became very, the farm became a very pivotal place for me because it became a place where I could really live out a lot of my studies and things like that at the university and have students out. But what I realized in the process was how I could really use that place, that placemaking, all my degrees are in geography, to think about what does it mean to be in a place that has agriculture as its background. And with my studies of urban agriculture, it became the leaping off point for lots of different community programs, the most recent of which you've probably heard, but the goats that were grazing, just to let you know, we're rebuilding the program, there's going to be Team Wheat Ridge grazing team out there again, and that's turning out to be a lemonade story. So, we didn't ever find the goats, unfortunately. I, my background academically is, I have three degrees in geography, and one, the first one is in urban studies and planning, the second one is in agriculture, and the last one's in economic geography. And so, everything that I do and study is really around planning and thinking about how communities interact. I applied for this position because I'm really committed, not only to Wheat Ridge, I've been on the Planning Commission since 2012, but I'm very invested in how the form and this, the personality of this city continues. I just love it here, and I love how being on Planning Commission for me has been so great because, you know, you can academically study all of these things, but once you start doing it, kind of like the farm, it's completely different when you take the things out of the books and start doing them. And that's what I found in Planning Commission was actually seeing how participatory democracy works and having people come and share their stories and then making these decisions really was compelling for me to then apply for city council. I think that's about it. Do you all have any questions about me?
Thank you. Questions for Ms. Weaver. Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you mentioned, you were in an apprenticeship with Louise Turner.
Uh-huh.
What did you garner from her and what lessons did you learn from Louise Turner?
Well, amazingly, she was sort of the perfect person I didn't know because my dissertation was actually about fitting in food production land and how it was disappearing along the metro corridor. And of course, I had, I had, without knowing it, sort of run into not only the perfect person to apprentice with around farming, but the perfect person for understanding the structure of Wheat Ridge and its original, you know, she was part of the original group that created it. And so, just her thoughts on, I mean, she was an urban planner by heart, and we had many discussions milking goats around not only shape and form, but diversity in the city and housing and just, she felt very passionate about accessibility. And so, we ended up, as we were milking goats, talking about all of these things that we shared a lot of commonality on, in how to, how the city could grow.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions for Ms. Weaver?
I have one more.
You have another one?
Another one.
Okay, please.
You can come out and learn how to milk goats anytime.
Two for the price of one, go ahead.
Sure. I guess, what do you think that the city of Wheat Ridge could do as far as GIS and mapping systems or just our, what can we do better in the form of geography?
Sure. Well, that's something I actually teach, so. I think, I mean, at this level, what's great is I think the city of Wheat Ridge has done a really great job of sort of getting into the maps and thinking about form and connectivity. And I think that the story part, the narrative, if you will, you know, when we look at things like the NRS and hearing from people in our community, and really, I went a couple years ago to, I think it was a Activate 38 meeting, and essentially, they were doing an activity on store, what I would call story mapping, where people were looking at the map of Wheat Ridge and creating the story of what they hoped to see. And that's what I see happening in the strategy right now, is really hearing people through the different meetings and the different, not the interviews, but the online, the online survey of how they want that form to look. I really just think we have such an opportunity in Clear Creek Crossing to create this connectivity between one side of Wheat Ridge and the other, and just really develop not only the roadways, but the roadways for walking, for biking. And I talked about this in my application, but that place-ness. I mean, I love Wheat Ridge because there's all these places to stop in between Sheridan and Applewood, and that's sort of my world since I'm on 38th and all sorts of transportation. But I love the way we have this opportunity to, that everybody can choose a different way of moving through Wheat Ridge and have these wonderfully unique experiences, whether you, I don't have, I would like to say that I get on my bike every day, but I don't. I take the bus, I drive my car, I do, you know, I do a lot of walking and things like that. But that, those stories of the commonality of Wheat Ridge, I think is where we can really move forward and make more connections there.
Thank you.
Additional discussion, Mr. Matthews.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to find it extremely interesting to have an actual farmer on city council when we are known as the farmers.
Yes.
And I'm very interested...
First thing I did was buy a T-shirt from them.
I'm very interested in getting your perspective on some of these issues. Before I got elected, I used to do a lot of snippets, and I used to try and take it back down home and in some issues, I would like, make the comparison, even a farmer knows you can't cut your pasture in half and double the amount of cows you want to put on it. So, I'll be interested to see how that common sense falls through. And I'm really interested, since this is one of your specialties, my wife and I were talking about it the other day, we had kind of an epiphany of what's one of the things that we enjoy here about Wheat Ridge. And, you know, we're great grandparents, we're kind of looking at that, do we downsize and what do we do? And we just kind of decided that both in our home and in our space around our home, the thing that we really appreciated living here was airspace. And I think that's an underutilized and under-recognized term, that that's part of what helps make us a little bit of an urban rural atmosphere here, is that we still have airspace.
Well...
And that's what disappears in so many of these other communities when they start building up and close together. So, be interested in talking to you about airspace in the future.
Well, I'd love, if I have just a few minutes, I'd love to even respond to that. I think one of the, the interesting things for me that personally came out of the goat's disappearance was the community response that I received all across. I mean, I can't, I, not only did I have city of Wheat Ridge employees calling me because they were upset that the goats were gone, but the police escorts that had been there to help us do the goat parades, and then just citizens who came out to do searches on New Year's Eve Day, or excuse me, on New Year's Day to look for these goats. And so, that's one of the reasons why I want to rebuild the program, because I think you're definitely on to something. People love that we have this, this unique identity that is, it's room to breathe, and it's something agricultural they can't quite put their finger on, but when they see goats in the Clear Creek space, it's something that they identify with. And so, I completely agree with you.
Thank you. Additional questions? Ms. Dozeman.
I just have a comment. I wanted to thank you for stepping up and applying, and I'm really interested in hearing more about your perspective and how we're going to be honoring those agricultural roots and while ushering ourselves into the future, so I just, I wanted to thank you for stepping up.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Ms. Weaver, for coming and talking with us. We have scheduled at, before our study session, correct, Mr.?
Correct. We've called a special meeting, speaking of special meetings, for March 4th at 6:30 PM before the study session.
Okay. So, we will, we will take a vote on Ms. Weaver's application on, at about 6:30 or shortly thereafter on March the 4th, 2019. Thank you very much. Our second, our item number two is potential liquor code amendments, and this is sponsored by Mr. Dahl, if you would like to introduce this item.
Yes, thank you. Council is aware there have been a number of changes to the state liquor laws, and that has impact on our situation here and the liquor rules we have in place. And what we have done is put together a memo that you have in your packet that describes some policy questions that we need from you. There's a bunch, a whole raft of kind of mechanical change the code section kind of stuff that is also being done, but we have surfaced four specific issues that we need some policy guidance from you on. And in order to do that, Jane Greenfield from our office is here, and she prepared that memorandum, and I'm going to hand over to her for the purpose of taking you through those issues and getting the guidance we need from you so that we can turn it into ordinance language.
Terrific.
And I'm going to give her my mic and the whole chair and everything, so.
She's it.
Hello. Excuse me. Patrick, thank you. Okay, that would be great. Thank you. I realized this afternoon that for the discussion on the second and third issues, it might be helpful for you to have a zoning map, and so your city manager's passing that out. And I believe that the local schools are shown with little red stars, or green stars. I'm not that colorblind. So, to start with, attached to this memo, you have an eight-page ordinance with an exhibit. And as your city attorney described, these, this ordinance contains the fairly generic changes that have to be made to the liquor code because effective January 1st of this year, state law has gone into effect, and therefore, we need to update Wheat Ridge's liquor code. But if there are questions for any of you that have gone through this draft ordinance, if you have questions on that prior to getting into the four issues we're discussing in the study session, I'd be happy to entertain any of those. Seeing none?
If you have any questions, why don't you, why don't you proceed, and we'll see if we generate any questions.
So, the first issue, which is laid out here, relates to a, I don't know whether to call it a loophole that the legislature created, or whether it was simply the result of effective lobbying by retail liquor sales, stores. Before we got rid of the distinction for 3-2 beer and beer that had a higher alcoholic content, the sale of liquor, I'm sorry, the sale of 3-2 beer by 18 to 19 and 20-year-olds was not too much of a concern because the beer wasn't very strong. As we know now, a lot of these craft beers, draft beers, have more alcoholic content by volume and percentage than wine. For whatever reason, in the legislature's wisdom, they decided to exempt both liquor stores, retail liquor stores, and a category that you may or may not have, excuse me, in Wheat Ridge, which is liquor licensed drug stores, they specifically exempted them from the requirement that the people who sold alcohol beverages be 21 years of age. Excuse me. So, the issue for you tonight is whether we should make a further amendment to your liquor code to specifically require that if an employee of a retail liquor store is 18, 19, 20, that that store must have a supervisor who is at least 21 years of age.
Okay, Ms. Hoppe?
So, okay, so as I was reading this, the thing that I was thinking about is like the grocery stores. So, we're not specifically talking about grocery stores, we're talking about off-premise liquor stores, and currently, you have to be 21 years or older to work at an off-premise liquor store. Correct?
Not, you do not have to be over 21, you don't even have to be over 18 to work at a retail liquor store.
But to run the cash register, let's say, like...
Even to run the cash, even to run the cash register.
Okay.
You could be 18, 19, or 20.
What I highlighted here is what I thought your suggestion was, was that we would change in our code to specifically require onsite supervision by someone who's 21 years or older of a liquor store sales personnel that are under 21 years old. And that's for off-site liquor stores, not grocery stores, not 7-Elevens, not all these new guys that are able to carry beer. It's just specifically for liquor stores, is that...
It's for, it is for retail liquor licensees.
So, does a grocery store fall in that?
How do you currently, have you had any applications from liquor stores? I mean, sorry, grocery stores?
For new 3.2 or FMB licenses? No, we have not. The new law does allow 18 and 20-year-olds also to sell FMB without adult supervision. So, you can have a person working there, 16, stocking the shelves, and a person 18 who cannot consume alcohol selling it to somebody who's legally able to.
Right.
The problem with, I think, some of that is that the state doesn't require liquor stores, FMBs, off-premise licensees to register or tell us who their managers are, so there's no requirement that there's a background check or anything like that for those types of managers.
So, Robin, is an FMB a grocery store? Like, because now the grocery stores, that changed, and now the grocery stores can carry full-strength beers. So, I'm trying to figure out how, while I was reading this memo, I was trying to figure out where they fall into the definitions of off, are they considered an off-premise liquor license?
I'm sorry, yeah. 3.2 is taken away, so they're now classified as fermented malt beverage sellers, FMB, and they are considered off-premise. You can have either an off or an on, and now they reestablish that disadvantaged jurisdictions can now reissue on-off type licenses, like Lucky's Market was going to apply for. But you have to be in a population county over 36,000, both the city population of less than 7,500 for those licenses.
So, an on-off one would be that you can purchase the beer there, you can drink it there, and then you can take your other five home? Is that an on-off?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, there was a few of those, but Walmart came in and they just blew them out of the water.
But until, I think it's the end of June or the beginning of July, when you won't be able to issue on and off premises.
They took that right away from most people in June 4th, 2018, but Governor Polis just signed a new bill to reestablish the on-offs for those disadvantaged jurisdictions in small county areas, because that was, you know, there's 200 miles between liquor establishments, so that was how mom and pop made their big money.
Right.
Okay, so, I guess, let me try to clarify my question then. I highlighted at the end of one before two that you, the issue for discussion by council is whether to make a further amendment to the... is whether to make a further amendment to the liquor code in order to specifically require onsite supervision by someone 21 years or older of liquor store sales personnel that are under 21 years old. This would include FMBs and standalone liquor stores? Is that, is that what that would include?
Currently, a retail liquor store can sell beer of any strength, wine, or spirit as liquors, you know, what we typically think of as hard liquor. So it isn't just, whereas the grocery stores are selling only fermented malt beverage.
So, yeah, you'd have to add into this ordinance the FMB along with liquor stores, if you so desire.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Additional questions? Why don't you go into item number two?
Item number two and item number three both relate to the current provision in state law that has a 50, I'm sorry, a 500-foot distance separation requirement for any liquor licensee from schools. Your city, as have most cities, eliminated the 500-foot distance requirement for certain types of licensees where you don't see that being a problem. And right now, you do not have a separation requirement for hotel and restaurant, beer and wine, brew pub, arts, and Vintner's Restaurant licensees. There is a new category of licensee called lodging and entertainment licenses. License, and that's, that is one license lumped together, lodging and entertainment. Lodging, for the purposes of the state definition, think of a hotel that does not have a restaurant, because that is how, essentially how hotels are defined in state law. Entertainment venues are considered to be public recreation uses. They can either be sports facilities, or they can be cultural facilities. As I described in the memo, while the lodging establishments probably are not going to create a problem for you in the event that they're located within 500 feet of a school, you may have a different reaction to entertainment or sports venues, because they can be video arcades, pool, billiard parlors, bowling alleys, that type of entertainment. And under the State Department of Revenue's rules, which describe an entertainment facility, they only describe seven categories of entertainment or recreational uses, but the way that they describe them is, is to say, these uses are sports uses, but we're not limiting our definition to that, which means that other uses could be added. And so the question becomes, do you want to make a distinction between lodging venues versus entertainment or recreational venues? And if so, do you want to then add lodging to the category of licensees who could be within 500 feet of a school? So that's where the zoning map may come in handy, because each of you probably recognize in your own district where the schools are, but you may not be as familiar with exactly where the zoning lines fall.
Okay, Ms. Hoppe?
Okay, in two and three, there's a suggestion that says if council wishes to avoid the situation arising, the best solution, both legally and politically, would be to make an amendment to the city's zoning code rather than the liquor code that would require an application for a liquor man, oh, I've moved on to liquor manufacturers, sorry. Okay, let me go back to my other question that I had. Sorry, I was jumping ahead. So what you're saying is that because zoning and entertainment venues are in one lump licensing,
License.
we can in our, in our own, separate those so that we can then manage the distance between those separately, and so the suggestion would be to, to separate those in our own codes and licensing?
We think that you have the authority to do that based on Colorado case law on local regulations related to liquor. That's not something that's addressed by state law, and therefore, we think it's not prohibited. There's a great deal of leeway given to local control of liquor regulation.
Thank you.
Mr. Keter?
So, just to clarify, this is to, this would add lodging to the exemption, so it would, the effect, the practical effect would be that there are people, places now that could not serve alcohol that could if this exemption was changed. There's not, there's, if I'm reading right, there's nothing going the other way where there are existing businesses that, that currently can serve alcohol, but that would be, but that would be prohibited from doing so by this change?
Currently, as I understand this from your deputy city clerk, there have been no lodging and entertainment licenses applied for, or issued in Wheat Ridge, because this is a relatively new classification. And we're not making a recommendation one way or the other, but given the fact that you have hotel and restaurant licenses allowed to be within that 500-foot separation, you may view lodging in the same type of use category.
Mr. Matthews?
Thank you. I, let me bring up some specific examples, and that might help clarify a couple things for us. And since we're talking about lodging, over on Kipling, and up by the, by the freeway, we have, I think it's called Motel Eight or Motel Six, Motel Eight. It's got a restaurant that's built into the motel. It's got a school, say, 300 feet away. It's, it fronts on Kipling, but then Pennington School is behind it on the other side of Kettles and Campers. So what would hap, you know, that's one, that would be a, considered a lodging, even though the, the restaurant may be franchised out separately?
No, I think if there is lodging with, with a restaurant component, that would be viewed as a hotel under the state's definition of hotel. Now, I don't know whether that facility has any type of liquor license.
Oh, the restaurant does.
Robin, do you, do you know?
Okay.
Are you talking about the?
Super Eight.
The Super Eight, yeah. They have a restaurant license there for the restaurant only, not including the hotel rooms, because they are, are under different ownership.
Okay, so that, even though they're in the same building, now that would be a separate situation. Okay, now how, now the other, I'm just trying to wrap my head around this a little bit, because now where we have like, how are places like Right Coast Pizza, and I just bring that up because they're right across the street on 38th from Stevenson Elementary. And so they've got at least a beer license. I don't know if they sell liquor there. I don't recall, but what are we doing here that's going, that's going to affect that? And, you know, if they have pinball machines, is that become entertainment, or what's, is that just a restaurant now that's selling an alcoholic beverage?
Correct. That, Robin, that's, that they have a restaurant license, and several years ago, city council did change our local code to remove the distance restriction because of, because of that issue. So for a restaurant license in Wheat Ridge, the 500-foot restriction is eliminated.
And what they're looking at, you know, what we're looking at here is the distinction between the lodging, which is kind of a temperamental type of license. You don't get that hardcore facility like a, a bowling alley or a pool hall would, you know, attract. So we're trying to keep, you know, if you're going to do it, we're trying to keep those two separate types of licenses, you know, the entertainment away from the schools. And maybe like allow the lodging, you know, who knows what's going to go on out there, or how close it's going to get to some of the schools in the Clerkett Crossing, because it's not only inside of Wheat Ridge jurisdiction 500 feet, and it's anywhere within 500 feet. So it could be outside of the Wheat Ridge area, that, you know, lodging might, you know, come into play.
Ms. Hoppe?
So would an example of lodging, not a hotel license, be, could it potentially be like a, a hotel that doesn't necessarily have a restaurant, but they have, you know, a lot of times now they have those little areas where you can go and get, they have ice cream and, or cereal. You can buy a beer, a little bottle of wine, or whatever. That, that's the kind of thing that we're talking about when we're talking about lodging, to be clear?
Right, like a Days Inn or Comfort Inn, those kinds of places.
Sure, yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Davis?
So I have a question around the entertainment, because I think, you know, we're seeing it more, maybe it just happened, but probably with law changes. But like, you're starting to see in movie theaters that you, there's like a place where you can buy a cocktail, or like Belmar and Arvada. So that's the same thing. That would be like the entertainment, right? So, so basically, like, now let me ask you this. The movie theaters that are kind of, that the restaurant movie theaters, is that still considered entertainment, like Alamo Drafthouse?
That would depend what type of license they've applied for and what they could serve.
Most of your Alamo Drafhouses are hotel restaurants, because it's H and R.
Yeah, okay.
So they get that. There's been movie theaters that do have those types of full meals requirements that get the H and R, but most of them were licensed earlier as taverns. And that's why this rule came around to add the new L and E, lodging and entertainment type, because the taverns that were issued like that basically broke state law, because state law says the primary function of that establishment is to sell alcohol. And with those movie theaters, that was their secondary issue. Wasn't, you know, like a bowling alley or pool hall. Even there, you know, it kind of fell against state law. So they made this lodging entertainment license, and a lot of places converted to the L and E from the taverns. It's cheaper, and you still have the food requirements, sandwiches and light snacks at both facilities, but it was more convenience for the state, so they wouldn't be breaking their own laws.
Ms. Hoppe?
Mr. Goff, when we're looking at the, at the map, and let's say, the, I mean, the majority of the places that we have this kind of development that would be coming would be our TOD site or the Clear Creek Crossing. And so in the Clear Creek Crossing, I'm trying to remember where the entertainment area is, would it be right in the middle of the?
P-Mud.
P-Mud?
Yep.
Kind of right in the middle of that?
Correct.
So if it's right in the middle of that where it's, it's planned, then is it going to have a 500-foot issue with anything if there's a movie theater up there that decides to sell beer and wine?
Yeah, you look at, there, there is a scale on this map down at the bottom, left-hand corner. So I wouldn't think so. The other school in Applewood, there's a couple of schools that are on this map for some reason, but I think all the schools are further than 500 feet, so.
Yeah, the Manning School is right on Alchire and?
Yep. Then even the school over on, what's off of 38th and, what school is that? Let's see. 38th. Because that's Color Strand, yeah. That, that would be, that's.
Color Strand is Shawn.
Color Strand is Shawn.
That's plenty, that's plenty far away, yeah. Yeah, I don't think there'll be any issues with the 500-feet restriction.
For the?
For, for the Clerkett Crossing, TOD Center either. There's, there's no schools adjacent to that. While there is, what is it, Drake, off of 52nd? Is that Drake up there?
Drake, yes.
Drake, but that's, that's over 500 feet also.
Thank you.
But we do have, we do have a significant area on Kipling between 44th and I-70, and Pennington is, is in that neighborhood.
Yeah, and that was the question that Mr. Matthews had. Pennington could be within the 500 feet of some of that area.
And please remember that any new application, even though we might make an allowance for the 500-foot restriction, has to go in front of the liquor board of the needs and desires petitioning, and it might not be allowed for that petitioning purpose.
Additional discussion on item number two? Okay, Ms. Greenfield, would you want to take us through item number three?
Sure. This also relates to the 500-foot separation requirement, and it becomes an issue because the local liquor licensing authority is only allowed to license, I think, 14 of the 24 types of licenses that the state can issue. And the various types of licenses that you do, your liquor authority doesn't issue, but the state does, would be manufacturers. So about two years ago, I'm sure to encourage economic development and convenience for residents, Wheat Ridge amended their zoning code to permit microbreweries and micro distilleries and their taprooms within city limits in the zoning districts C Commercial, I Industrial, and the MU Zone. So it is possible that you could have a state-licensed liquor manufacturer being within 500 feet from a school if you have a school that is within 500 feet of one of these zoning districts. So the issue is whether or not that is an acceptable location for a manufacturer of alcoholic beverages or not. And if it is not, our recommendation would be that we change that in your zoning code rather than addressing it in the liquor code, for two reasons. You, your basis for adopting zoning changes that allowed microbreweries, you probably still want to continue to do. However, they're, they're currently listed as permitted uses in these zones. And you could add a restriction that if a manufacturer of alcoholic beverages was within 500 feet of a school, they would have to go through your special use review rather than being permitted by right.
And a manufacturer would, would or could offer on-premises consumption, or by being a manufacturer, you would not, not permit on-premises consumption?
No, they usually have, well, they frequently will have a tap room associated with them, tasting rooms.
So this is manufacturer and consumption?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
They don't necessarily have to.
They don't have to, but they could.
They could. And so you could divide them in your zoning code into those microbreweries that were within 500 feet and keep those in your permitted classification. And, I'm sorry, that, that were not within 500 feet, you could keep them within your permitted classification of use, and make those that fell within 500 feet of a school become subject to special review. And that way, there'd be the opportunity for your public hearing, comment of the neighborhood, et cetera. This was an issue about a year ago in one of the, one of the municipalities in eastern Boulder County, I know.
Discussion on bullet point number three. Mr. Urban?
I think it would be appropriate to revise the zoning code to define the difference between a special use and a permitted use regarding that 500 feet, so I would be okay with that.
Additional discussion on that item? Mr. Keter?
I guess as long as we're having discussions of concrete examples, just to wrap our heads around it. So Colorado Plus is a restaurant that brews on premises. Is that a brewery that would fall under this proposal, or is, or are they, because they're also presumably have a restaurant license, that would, would they? that would, would they be subject to this, this potential change?
No, Colorado Plus is a brew pub licensed with us. So they're already exempt or waived from that 500-foot. We have like four or five new distilleries in town. And they're out by the industrial zones on 52nd. It'd be more like Ricoli's or similar brewery, hardcore brewery coming in here. Or a distillery, like the new retail development over by Everett. And put in a distillery right across the street from the elementary school. That's what this, this bill's looking at.
Ms. Hobbie?
So I guess a point of clarification would be that it depends on the food production that also happens within the premises. So a brew pub has a large amount of food sales, plus they're brewing their beer. And then they also have their liquor sales where a brewery, like Ricoli's, they don't have necessarily food sales. They have some light snacks that they offer, I think, for free. Is that, so that would be kind of the difference between the two?
Well, a lot of it has to do with the Needs and Desires survey. We require them by state law for all of our retail licensees. Like Jane was talking about, the state doesn't require them for any of their licenses. So there's instances up in Broomfield where a brewery was put right in the middle of the classrooms for charter school. So to get from, like from first to third grade or, you know, during recess time, they had to go across the brewery's patio like that on Ricoli's. They'd have to cross that patio to get to the other side of their schools. And that caused a lot of outrage because no one knew. All of a sudden, boom, here's a brewery. And here we're talking about at least giving us the chance to have zoning to, you know, petition the neighborhood, like they go out and, you know, say, we got a petition coming up, a hearing, public hearing for a new zoning change or zoning for a new business that would include alcohol production. Cause right now, the state just gives us a, a permit for a sales room. And the only thing we have to do for it is, you know, we can deny it, but only for zoning purposes, undue traffic and noise. That's the only way we can ask them to revoke that permit. And usually it's not paid any heed to. The applicants have a chance to mitigate any kind of, you know, they say, well, we'll put in traffic bumps, you know, we'll put in the signs. And that in the state's eyes allows them to go ahead and issue their liquor license to those individuals.
Robin, isn't there also a difference between the volume of production between a brew pub and a distillery? Like Colorado Plus is only going to produce a certain amount or they're restricted to? Can you talk to that?
Yeah, they are restricted to a little bit less. Brew pubs are restricted to less manufacturing capabilities than a brewery. But still brew pubs are allowed to manufacture and wholesale up to 300,000 gallons of beer. And that's a lot of beer. Not, not many people get close to that. So like I said, the breweries are more the hardcore type of manufacturers. And they're not required, just like the still pubs, they're not required any type of food sales. In fact, the state law doesn't allow breweries to have food on the premise.
Ms. Hobbie?
So with that, brew pubs are required to have food sales, breweries are not?
Brew, that's correct, yeah. Brew pubs, all retail licensees are required to have food. State manufacturer wholesalers are not required to have food.
Thank you.
Additional questions? Ms. Greenfield, let's go on to number four.
Okay. Your final issue here is really a, a question of allocating your local occupation tax and where this new type of license, the lodging and entertainment license should fall. Currently, you have Class G and Class T. They are an annual occupation tax. Class T is $1,300. Class G is $900. And currently, your hotel and restaurant licensees are considered Class G operators. So they pay $900 a year. The ordinance as drafted proposes to add brew pubs, distillery pubs, and vintners restaurants to this category. So they will also pay 900 annually in tax. Taverns, on the other hand, and businesses who have similar characteristics to taverns, they fall into this higher tax category. And the question is whether or not, once lodging and entertainment licenses start to be issued, whether they should fall into the Class G category or the Class T category. As I outlined in this memo briefly, you can make an argument either way based on the state's definition of the use. The state's definition of a hotel is that it has to have a restaurant because its primary function is providing lodging to people, not serving them alcohol. Whereas the state's definition of tavern is that their principal business is the sale of alcoholic beverages. And they're, they may, but are not required to have, well, they may have some food, but it is not their primary function. So on the one hand, one could make the argument that lodging and entertainment licensee is more like a tavern. On the other hand, you can make the argument that a lodging and recreational sports activity licensee is more like a tavern. And that's really the question. You are probably more familiar with the types of uses that you have here in the city than I. And it's a question probably of equity.
Okay, Mr. Keeder?
So just as with the lodging and entertainment and the 500-foot school spacing, would, would it be, would it be legal to split those out in this category in this as well? If, and, and not necessarily advocating that, but just, just would we be able to say lodging should be one and entertainment should be the other?
I would think that you could, yes, if you chose to do that.
Mr. Matthews?
Okay, I'm starting to get a little lost here in semantics too. We already have hotels. And I assume motels and hotels are lumped into the one category. What's the difference between, they already have some kind of a license. What's the difference between whatever they're doing right now versus a lodging license?
Having a restaurant. A hotel has to have a restaurant, whether you call it a hotel, a motel, an inn. It, if it's getting a permit to sell alcohol under a hotel and restaurant license, then it has to have a restaurant associated with it.
Okay, then what, what would then be the lodging? What's, what's the lodging license?
Lodging would be, as was described earlier, a type of motel, let's say, that does not have a full-service restaurant associated with it. They simply have the ability to sell wine or beer the same way they have vending machines. I mean, not that they would use vending machines, but.
Used to in the fraternity house.
Was never in one.
Ms. Hobbie?
So I think I might take a stab at some of these to try to find a couple of different consensuses. The first consensus that I'm going to try for is, can we find consensus to give direction to separate lodging and entertainment licenses within Wheat Ridge? Right currently, they're bundled. We would separate them and we would manage them separately, meaning they would be, we'd be able to manage them differently under the tax. And then also under like the 500-foot buffer zone. So is there a consensus to separate those two?
Is this, is this under one of these numbers?
It's under number two.
Number two, okay.
The second paragraph.
And four, the way that you're describing it?
Well, I, I was going to do that one separately, but yeah. So can I, can I ask for consensus on that?
So we have consensus, do we have consensus on that?
Question for clarity?
Go ahead with questions.
This is just, this is just to separate them, not necessarily to talk about the buffer qualities.
To separate them first, yeah.
Okay, looks like we have consensus to separate.
And we understand that by separating them, you're still going to be issuing them a license that's called lodging and entertainment. But we're going to separate them for the purposes of distance from schools?
Well, so that we can then be able to do the fees. And then also to be able to do, if we wanted to make one of them applicable to the 500-foot buffer zone and one of them not.
Okay.
And separation doesn't mean we have to treat them differently. It just means we can if we decide to.
All right, so then my next consensus that, now that we've separated them, is going to be, can we find consensus to not allow entertainment licenses within 500 feet of a school? Entertainment licenses include but not limited to sports venues, video arcades, pool and billiard parlors, bowling alleys, laser tag premises. So that would mean that lodging could be within 500 feet, but entertainment licenses wouldn't be. So that's the consensus I'm asking for.
Question, Mr. Urban?
How would that relate to existing licensees renewing their license should this come into effect?
My understanding, and you have the knowledge on this, Robin, is that there currently are no lodging and entertainment licenses existing in Westminster, so. I'm sorry. Wheat Ridge, the other W, yes.
And it's true, if they do get a license and then a school is built, they would be grandfathered in up until the date that they don't renew their license and have to apply for a new license. And then that 500-foot restriction would kick in.
Mr. Pond?
A comment and then a question. My, my comment is that I'm, I'm a little bit apprehensive of voting for the, for the consensus without having a little better picture literally in a map or something to understand what, what this is. Hearing that there's no one is one thing. Now, here's my question. We have at least a couple bowling alleys that I'm aware of. And so obviously, they don't fit in this category, I guess, although it says bowling alley. So that's confusing to me. So Wheat Ridge Lanes and Paramount Lanes is an example, must have a different license, not entertainment. Now, if we are pushing them towards entertainment, then, you know, again, I, I start to have some different questions.
Good question. Robin, can you speak to that? The bowling alleys, what kind of license they have?
They both have H and R licenses. And they were not allowed to convert back when the state instituted this lodging and entertainment license. So they'd have to apply for a changed class to go to the entertainment right now.
They're fine the way they are.
They're fine the way they are.
Any new bowling alley is not fine the way they are, or?
Or a change in?
Ms. Davis?
I think I, I'm kind of going down the same route as far as not only new, we'll just use bowling alleys, but, but change of owners. So let's pretend we go from Brunswick to AMF or something. If it's a change in owners, and so therefore there's going to be a change in liquor license. So somebody else is going to have to apply for a liquor license. Those new, new somebodies wouldn't be grandfathered in.
Yeah, they would with the transfer license, as long as that license is still valid. They're grandfathered in, they can be within the 500-feet restriction in the school.
As long as there's a transfer, but there's other ways too, right?
A transfer, change of corporate officers, do a backdoor transfer. It's still, the license is valid and it crosses, you know, that boundary.
When would it not be valid?
Well, like I said before, if, if you don't reenact a 500-foot restriction to waive that, if they ever did fail to renew, then 180 days past their expiration date, they would be treated as a new applicant. And that's where your distance restrictions, including liquor stores, would come into play.
Okay.
Ms. Hobbie?
I'll move on to a different consensus without one failing. I, when looking at the definitions of Class G and Class T, which if you look in the ordinance, they're on page six and seven. I would like to ask for a consensus to consider lodging as a Class G operator and entertainment as a Class T operator.
Yes, I have a question on that.
Mr. Urban?
So when we talk about entertainment being the primary purpose of a business and the sale of alcohol being a secondary purpose, if I have a wall of flat-screen TVs and I'm showing sports, is that my primary business? Or is it the liquor that I'm selling to keep people watching the TVs?
Do you have a tavern license now?
I don't know. No, no. I don't have any kind of license.
You're unlicensed.
I'm an unlicensed, right.
You probably, you, since they just created this lodging and entertainment license class, you have some sort of a liquor license now. Whether that's a hotel and restaurant license or a, I don't know, a brew pub or a tavern. It's probably one of those three. And so that is going to be pretty determinative of what you can change to if you, in the future, decide that you, that there is some advantage to you to going to this lodging and entertainment license.
Thank you.
Why don't I separate those then? Can I ask for a consensus to consider lodging under the Class G operators?
Which is a $900?
I can read Class G. All operators who are licensed to sell alcohol beverages for consumption on the premises, either as brew pubs, distillery pubs, vintners restaurants, hotels and/or restaurants shall be Class G operators. So it's where we currently class hotels. So can I ask for a consensus to tax lodging under G?
Okay, so you're proposing the lodging be a Class G?
Which is a $900 annual fee.
We have consensus on that.
Can I ask a question? Is there anything other than that $900 fee that's affected there? I mean, is that basically what we're voting on, the 900 versus the $1,300 fee?
Yes, on this issue, yes.
And Patrick, I have a question. We also have an entertainment tax, don't we?
We have a admissions tax.
Admissions tax.
It's 4% in lieu of sales tax. And it's for our bowling alleys and movie theaters and bill, any billiards and pinball machines, I guess, if we have any of those anymore.
So then entertainment basically would get taxed as an admission tax? And they'd have to pay the annual?
If they're selling alcohol in addition to the.
Only if they're selling alcohol in addition. Okay, all right. So I'm going to ask for consensus for entertainment licenses to fall under the Class T category, which reads, all operators selling alcohol beverages by the drink only for consumption on premises. And such operators shall have available for consumption on the premises during business hours, sandwiches and light snacks, but they need not have meals available for consumption. That would be for entertainment.
So that's entertainment. Got more? We've got consensus on that.
And then, I think I'm, I'm done. I'm done there.
Come on, you were on a roll. Can I ask a quick question?
You may, Ms. Davis.
Can I ask just a clarification on the 500-foot in the buffering or what you may call it? From my understanding, from listening, there can always be, like in the liquor meeting, there can always be a dispute or, or people might think, no, that's, that's just not an appropriate use in that space. So even. So even if we had the 500, or say we allowed the 500 feet, the Liquor Authority could always say, you know, like your example of the school, that this is just not appropriate here. Is that...
Well, needs and convenience of the neighborhood is always a consideration, but it would be problematic, I think, to base it on being within 500 feet of a school if you indicated in your code that they could be within 500 feet of a school. So as I've understood you to say that you're comfortable with lodging being within 500 feet of a school, and so now you're discussing whether entertainment venues or sports venues are appropriate. Is that correct?
If that's the case, then yes, you know, we can deny it at Liquor Authority hearings for the needs and desires survey petitioning, but anytime any application is denied, it's allowed by the applicants for judicial review and they can take it to the courts.
Well, Christie, the real key here is to remember that the Liquor Authority isn't a land use, it's not a land use licensing authority, and so, you know, you can only, it's, jurisdiction is really narrow to needs and desires under the liquor code. So you can't rely upon, and shouldn't rely upon, the Liquor Authority to make
Yeah.
Kind of a land use decision, you just can't layer that onto them. So as much of a land use decision as the council's making tonight is to say, the 500-foot restriction does or doesn't apply. And if it does not, if that restriction does not apply, then you can't expect the Liquor Authority to apply it in a given application because you're saying it does not apply. They can still, as Robin points out, say yes or no based upon needs and desires of the neighborhood, but they're the ones issuing liquor licenses, not, you know, zoning entitlements, and they just need to be separate.
Okay.
Ms. Hoppe?
I did have one more, I'm sorry. But I, I kind of would like to see if we could have a little more discussion on the item three, manufacturing. So microbreweries, distilleries, wineries, making an amendment to the city zoning code rather than the liquor code that would require an application for liquor manufacturing within 500 feet of a school be reviewed as a special use permit rather than a permitted use. So I support that being as a special use permit, but I kind of wanted a little more discussion because we didn't really talk much about that.
Mr. Pond?
I, I think in, in principle, I'm okay with that as well. However, what I don't understand is how often, if ever, there are actual manufacturer facilities like breweries, distilleries, et cetera, that do not have taprooms or any, anything that's open to the public in any way. I assume the answer is, they don't usually do that, but I assume that the language does not preclude that from happening. So to me, I'm okay with the special use, you know, layer onto this, but I would be specific more about the, the fact that there's a taproom or tasting or something else that's associated with the manufacturer that is an additional trigger to the SUP. I mean, to me, that makes more sense.
Not to get too far into my personal habits, but I have significant familiarity with breweries in the metro area, and there are places that have just production facilities and that do not have any onsite consumption or taprooms or sales or anything.
For that point, Sleeping Giant, a brewery down downtown Denver, is a sole manufacturer of beer for other people. They use the alternate proprietor's permit, and they only do is manufacture thousands of gallons of beer every day. No tap, I mean, no taproom, no wholesale, no food.
What I don't know is whether the definition of a microbrewery that you put in your code a few years ago would limit those types of uses to, you know, microbreweries and microdistilleries that do have taprooms as opposed to a large-scale production only, you know, of the type that Robin described.
When you say you don't know, is it that the code's unclear, or just as a question you haven't investigated?
No, I haven't investigated that aspect of your code.
Additional discussion? Did you have a, did you have a consensus that you were working on, Ms. Hoppe? Relative to item number three?
Well, I was hoping to hear from some more of the councillors, but I can try for consensus, and then if you hate it, you can tell me why.
Well, Mr., you want to wait until Mr. Matthews?
Oh, sure.
Yes, Mr. Matthews?
While we're talking about number three here, are we going to address the idea of a zoning change here while we're in the study session? Because it seems paramount, number three, that we may need to do that. And also, I would enjoin the council perhaps to, as this issue comes before us, again with a finished product, to lean very heavily on Mr. Eaton as kind of an expert witness, since he has years of experience with liquor licensing and what have you, and has gone through many classes, to help maybe catch any pitfalls or traps that we might be stepping into before we come to a final vote.
Okay. Mr. Keeter?
Unless I'm stepping on anybody's toes, I wonder with Mr. Pond's question, whether the question as to how broad the category of brew pubs and micro distilleries, whether they're not brew pubs and microbreweries and micro distilleries, and whether that would sweep in production-only facilities and at what scale? I wonder if that's potentially a question that would be worth having answered before moving forward on a, on a policy. And I don't know if that's a, I don't know if asking for more information is something we need consensus on, or if that's a result of not having a consensus on a policy question, but...
Mr. Pond?
Well, I mean, my, my feeling is we could have a consensus tonight, and it is related to zoning, because you're basically saying, what, what is our feeling about recommending a special use permit that's zoning? So, so, and I would, I would vote for a consensus that looked at special use permitting for manufacturers that had a tasting or taproom, you know, and that's, that's it, that's as far as I would go. And, and again, I think looking into it, which is, it needs to be, it would have to be brought back to us, I think, in some form, that we could see the language and the way it was going to work, obviously, and then that would be our discussion. So that's, that's my feeling on that.
I'd like to make a suggestion that the, you may want to consider this as a step two to your liquor code changes, so that staff could go ahead and put the ordinance that you currently have as a draft in front of you, because these do not have, you know, policy concerns that I've heard from any of you, and that could be brought to you, you know, as soon as your next council meeting, since you'd like to get in place consistency with the state statute, since that went into effect January 1st of this year. And then, these other issues that you're providing some information on for staff as far as your consensus or not consensus on, could bring draft language back to you along with the information on whether or not the city currently would allow in its, anything perhaps other than its industrial district, a large-scale alcohol manufacturer.
But once again, we might do that through the zoning code rather than through the...
Correct.
Rather than through the liquor code. Ms. Hoppe?
So what I'm hearing is that we, we do need to make sure that we're up to the, the changes that have been made at the state level.
Yes.
And those don't necessarily involve the consensus that have already been made for this evening.
That's right.
So I would like to make a consensus that we direct staff to draft our ordinance to bring us up to date and in line with the state changes on the liquor licensing.
We have consensus on that?
Okay, so then that gets us halfway down the road, and then, and then I would like to make a consensus that that's done, while that's done immediately, the rest of our stuff we'll bring to a later date to do. More study session, please? Can we get a consensus for that, then?
Okay, and with a question with Mr. Pond?
I certainly agree on item number two, item number three. Bringing those back, because I think there's more studying on that. Now, let me just ask, because Councilmember Hoppe avoided it. The item of, the issue of 21 or older as it relates to this, is that something?
Issue one.
Issue one, thank you.
Yes.
Whether or not that needs to be brought back and/or, because I'm assuming if we were to discuss it now, ask you some questions to discuss it now, you would, you would add something into this amendment. So I think it's worthwhile just to discuss it a little bit now. If we can't resolve it, we punt on it with the other ones. As I understand this, and I'm really trying to kind of track on it, but basically, there's a kind of carve-out or missing piece of the state statute that is essentially allowing for liquor license holders in a variety of two...
Two categories.
Two categories, which are?
Retail liquor sale, liquor, liquor sales and retail drug store liquor sales.
Okay, so let me, so let's get really clear. So restaurant, no, obvious.
They're all required to have...
They're all required, wonderful, wonderful. So it's a seven, it could be a 7-Eleven, it could be, it could be, but it could be a liquor store, Bob's Liquor Store.
Right.
Okay. And this was, and this was the way it was, has always been, or?
Before, they got, in 2016, that's when the legislature decided, effective this year, to get rid of the distinction on 3.2 beer.
Okay, right.
And so previously, if you were 18, 19, or 20, and you were working in a retail liquor store, yes, you could sell 3.2 beer, but you couldn't sell...
Spirits?
You couldn't sell, yeah, something stronger than that.
So now there's a larger gap because it's...
Because now there is no distinction for whether it's 3-2 beer or it's 16.5% beer.
Or hard liquor, in this case.
That's right.
Because that's been left out as well.
Right.
Okay, so my feeling is, I mean, I, I don't think it seems unreasonable to me, and I'm interested in how other people feel about it, to, to actually ask that there's someone in the store who's 21 to sell, to sell, you know, and I think that's what we're, that's what, that's what we're talking about here.
I think that's the question, Mr. Matthews.
I saw someone here, some provisions, but are there provisions in that for family-run businesses where junior can work in the store? I know in construction, we have some strict rules on child labor laws and stuff, but yet, an owner's...
Currently...
Son or daughter could go to work on a construction site.
Yeah. Currently, it's broken out by age, and you can have an under 18-year-old working, stocking shelves, whatever, cleaning up. They can't be selling liquor, and they do have to be supervised.
Ms. Hoppe?
With, I guess with those clarifications, I feel a little more comfortable. What I was concerned about was grocery stores, so like a grocery store checker, but I suppose it, I mean, their manager, I would hope, would be at least 21 years older, or the floor supervisor, it just says supervisor, so it, you know, onsite supervision. So at some point, hopefully, a head checker or somebody would be 21 or something if a kid was not, but I, that was my concern, was grocery stores. But I, I am, I am comfortable with making a consensus to, to change, to change that tonight also.
Mr. Keeter?
I guess this is following up a bit on, on Mr. Matthews, that I'm thinking specifically of 29th and Fenton, there's the small, family-run gas station and liquor store, and I know that there are a variety of, I mean, nowadays, everybody seems young to me, but, but younger people working, and I think I would, I would like to get some more information as to how that would impact businesses like that, whether that would mean that, I honestly don't know whether they have people under 21 working there, but often they have only one person working, and so I'd be, I think I would be more comfortable getting more information and putting this in with the, let's come back and talk about it later.
Pyle?
Are they also selling Lotto tickets?
Yes.
At the, they are selling Lotto at the gas station side, it's actually, like it's physically separated.
Because I think they have to be 21.
I don't know on that. Ms. Davis?
So I, I feel it's reasonable to have a 21-year-old supervisor in a situation like that, but I think Ms. Dozeman and I are kind of sidebarring it over here. But I think the other question is, is how do you enforce that? I, I mean, I mean, do you enforce it like you normally would when you, when I, you know, when you send a 14-year-old to go buy beer, you know, and do they do the same thing? Maybe go in there and say, hey, you're 18, may I speak to your 21-year-old supervisor? I mean, I guess do they enforce it that same way? I'd just be curious, I mean...
Well, when the liquor license is granted, it would be a condition of the license, and then you would, someone who violated it would fall into, you know...
Yeah.
Potentially having their license revoked or fined. Enforcement is always an issue.
Mr. Keeter, you were looking at, at more of a survey of the city or of potential outlets and what that impact might be on the merchants?
I, I was thinking personally that I would like to talk to the people that own the liquor store right near me just to get a, obviously, that's a, that's a very small sample size, and to the extent that, that there, that people know of other places that could be potentially impacted on that, I just, I don't necessarily have the knowledge as to who else might be, might be out there that could be impacted.
Mr. Goff, is that, is that information that we may be able to gather by staff? Or, Mr. Keeter, is that information that you were thinking of queries on a, on sort of a personal and ad hoc basis, so that, a little more research into this question?
I was just thinking personally on an ad hoc basis that the, I fully understand that if the business I'm thinking of doesn't have a problem, that doesn't mean nobody does, but if I talk to them and they do have an issue, then, then I may have some different thoughts about how I feel about the policy.
Would, would we have, have the time in our schedule in order to, to do a little investigation?
We could send a letter to all of our license holders and let them know of these, these proposed changes and ask them for any input.
Do we have consensus on that? Well?
Just on this one issue, or you want it on all these issues we've discussed this evening? You've, we already have consensus to move forward on some of them, but do you want to backtrack on that now, or is that, am I hearing that, or?
I don't necessarily think it's backtracking, it's just telling them this is what we're considering, and we haven't passed anything yet, so while we've made consensus, I think it's important to let them know this is what we're considering.
Ms. Hoppe?
I mean, the consensus we have is to separate the lodging and entertainment licenses. I don't know that that would be an issue, especially since all they're brand-new and nobody out there has one of them yet in Wheat Ridge, so I think we can keep that consensus. The other consensus was how we were going to tax lodging and entertainment, again, new, we don't have any of those, so I don't think that we need to pull, pull that consensus. we don't have any of those, so I don't think that we need to pull, pull that consensus. And I'm pretty sure those were the only two I ended up coming up to. I made a third, but it didn't pass.
There was consensus to direct staff to update ordinance and, to bring it in line with state law?
The new ordinance to bring in line with state, so I don't know that we need to remove any of our consensuses, actually.
Okay.
So, I think the, you know, the communication may be that the council is studying this, that they've arrived at consensus on these issues and are looking to get some more feedback on, on the twenty-one-year-old supervision issue. Ms. Hoppy.
Can, can we add the, can we add something about that we're looking at microbreweries, distilleries, wineries, with taprooms being potentially a special use permit in there also? So, something on the twenty-one, on the age of twenty-one, and then something on the special use permit, can we add that into there?
We can, I'm not sure how relevant it will be for most of our license holders, but, Robin, I'm not sure if you have any input on that?
Yeah, I don't, you know, being a state license holder, I don't have any contacts with those people, I have to Google them, for sure.
That's true, we don't have.
On the retail licensees. I can sure get the off-premises, people an email, do a Survey Monkey on them or something, you know, throw it out there to them.
The state has a.
Mr. Urban?
The state has a database that's open to the public for all licensees of all kind.
I have that, but it doesn't have contact information, so you basically have to still Google their LLCs or trade names, which isn't, don't get me wrong, impossible, but whatever you guys need, I can get her done.
Ms. Hoppy.
Do they still have to have a business license along with their liquor license?
Everybody runs a business and the city of Wheat Ridge has to have a business license.
So then, wouldn't we be able to pull that information from the business license department?
For the places that are in town currently, yes, we, we can.
Because I thought we were just going to ask just our, just the city of Wheat Ridge that hold these license, a liquor license for, for off-premise liquor sales, so that's standalone liquor stores and grocery stores, which are now FMB, and we were going to ask, and then we could ask any already microbreweries or distilleries or wineries that we have, what their opinion is on that being moved into special use permit, and we can pull that information from business licenses?
Yeah, sure.
Is it, well, we already made the consensus, so I just want to make sure everybody agrees with that.
Are we, are we good on that consensus to query? Okay, we are. Are there additional items that we need to make decisions on, on this? Item number two.
Do you have everything you need, Jane?
I think we do.
We good to go?
Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. You may be excused. And we will go to item number three. Mr. Urban, you brought this forward, would you like to introduce this item, please?
Thank you, Mayor. So, initially, we were going to discuss the safe injection site issue, and, and given the status at the state level and the, the unlikelihood that that measure would go forward, it seems premature to discuss the safe injection site, insight issue, but I think it's more appropriate that we discuss the opioid crisis here in Wheat Ridge as a whole and understand three basic things. What has gone on? What is, what are we doing now, and what can we do in the future to help stem the tide of this crisis? So, back in 2013 and 2014, the state devised a consortium of individuals that wanted to look at how can we reduce the abuse of prescription drugs across the board? And coming out of that process, there is a monitoring program called the Colorado Prescription Drug Monitoring Program, and what that allowed is for the state to better monitor the types of opioids that are being prescribed, the, the amounts of opioids that are prescribed, and be able to alert individuals as it relates to persons seeking prescriptions in multiple places, doctor shopping, and other types of behaviors that are considered more at risk than others. And so, what, what has ended up happening is, is that by the, the prescription drug monitoring program being in place, it's caused doctors and professionals to be like, rightfully, more conservative and more alert as it relates to people seeking prescriptions, as well as encouraging prescribers to offer non-pharmaceutical options towards pain management. And so, what we've seen is, is that the opioid prescriptions have had a dramatic decrease in the number of prescriptions available. But reducing the prescriptions doesn't reduce the addiction that individuals have now developed based on their previous, previously prescribed opioids. And so, in many ways, the opioid crisis goes right into the heroin crisis and the, the number of individuals overdosing on heroin because of the lack of availability of opioid prescriptions by licensed physicians, which in and of itself is, is a good thing, that we're focusing more on how can we manage pain in non-pharmacological ways. So, that's a good thing, but the, the outcome from that is that we see more individuals with a heroin addiction or other type of issue. So, looking specifically at Wheat Ridge, both the state and the, the feds have a way of tracking who's receiving prescriptions and, and how does that prescription rate compare with other zip codes? So, within the city of Wheat Ridge, we've seen our opioid prescribing rate at about six and a half percent compared to a national rate of 5.3 percent from 2013 to 2016. And then, as you go forward in time, our overall prescribing of opioids rate has gone down, but the extended release prescriptions have gone up. So, in many ways, the types of prescriptions have changed, and the types of pills that are being offered have changed, but the, overall, the numbers of prescriptions have gone down. Now, as I said earlier, that doesn't necessarily change the addiction patterns of individuals, that in many ways exacerbates that. So, there's been a significant number of public awareness campaigns addressing the different aspects of this issue. One that has been taken, I believe the Wheat Ridge Police Department has done quite a bit of work with the Take, Take Meds Back Safely program, as well as the Take Med Seriously campaign, and that allows individuals, regardless of whether opioids or not, to safely dispose of those medications either through the police department or through a DEA-registered pharmacy. So, we have several of those pharmacies located in Wheat Ridge that are allowed to receive, disposed of medications, and that's an important resource for individuals. And then, in addition to allowing the, the take-back of prescription drugs that people don't need anymore, there's also an issue of long-term care facilities and their ability to dispose of medications properly, and I believe Wheat Ridge has a fair number of long-term care facilities. And so, at this point, those long-term care facilities don't necessarily have the ability to dispose of those themselves, they need to partner with a local pharmacy. And in addition to the, the sort of take-back medication aspect of it, there's several other campaigns. One is Rise Above Colorado, and that deals with understanding the team perceptions of drug abuse and helping them make healthier choices, and so that's an important aspect of this. But as well as understanding that the interaction between opioids and other medications are sometimes unknown, and that's where the JP Opioid Interaction Awareness Alliance helps educate individuals about how opioids impact and interact with other prescribed medications, specifically anti-anxiety medications, as well as the Generation RX Educational Awareness Program that helps colleges and universities educate individuals about prescription drug abuse. So, we have quite a few different public awareness campaigns out there, and I think the city could do well to educate our residents about the various public awareness campaigns that are out there, so that's a key part of our response. But in addition to that, we want to make sure that the individuals that are in addiction, that are seeking help, that have taken steps towards recovery, are supported in that recovery. I'm not speaking about individuals who have not sought recovery and who are still in the throes of addiction, but just are not at that point of recovery. But for those seeking help with recovery, there are several steps that we can take to assist them. One is that, that there is a House Bill seven, SB 1908, which is the Substance Use Disorder and Treatment, excuse me, Substance Use Disorder Treatment and Criminal Justice System, and that concerns treatment of individuals with substance use disorders who come in contact with the criminal justice system and can, in connection therewith, making an appropriation. So, what that means is that if an individual is experiencing some type of substance abuse, we want to get them into recovery, not necessarily into the criminal justice system. They, they should still be prosecuted for any crimes that they commit while, while abusing drugs, but they should be also open to recovery programs as well. So, that's one thing that we can do, is to support that Senate bill. In addition to that, there were previous bills that were passed by the legislature that deal with both needle sticks and drug, drug paraphernalia that are on the, the state books, but we as a city do not have that similar law here. And so, the needle stick prevention law at the state level allows an individual who has a needle on him to alert a law enforcement officer at the time of their arrest or their interaction with the officer, that they have a needle on them, and they would not be then charged for having that needle. And the benefit of that is that our law enforcement personnel are not in danger of being stuck simply because someone doesn't want to tell them that they have a needle for fear of prosecution of that particular offense of that drug paraphernalia. That doesn't mean that they should not be charged and prosecuted on all other charges that they may be facing, but as it relates to that needle stick, that does help our law enforcement professionals avoid that instance. So, that, that's one thing that we can amend our current code, Section 16, to conform with that state law. The next one is the drug paraphernalia law exemption, and that's if somebody is engaged in a treatment program or a needle exchange program, which is separate and different from a safe-site injection, which does not exist. But the drug paraphernalia law exemption allows an individual who's participating in a needle exchange program or a recovery program, that if they are caught with a needle with, in, in some kind of law enforcement interaction, then they would not be prosecuted for holding that needle. So, that is something that we can do to, again, come into line with what is already on the state books, and I'm not sure whether or not we've had anybody charged under that law recently or not, and I defer to the police department to understand that. But, and then the last thing that we can do as a city is to consider ways that we can increase access to naloxone and, as well as safe, safe syringe disposal. So, as we've, as I personally seen on the Green Belt and other places, there's a significant amount of needles that are just being discarded, and if we can in any way encourage the safe disposal of those syringes or those needles, that would do us all a world of good. So, that's basically what I came up with as far as understanding what we as a city can do. We can promote the public awareness campaigns, we can encourage those that are seeking recovery towards the recovery programs that are available to them, and then we can also change some of the laws that we have, as well as support the state laws that are being considered presently.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Urban? Ms. Hoppy.
Mr. Urban, thank you very much for putting this together. There's a few of your suggestions that, that also protect the community at large, and so like the needle stick program and then the safe syringe disposal, but I guess my question is, what is the charge for drug paraphernalia if somebody is caught with, and I don't expect you to know this, but if somebody's caught with a needle in, in Wheat Ridge, what is the charge that comes, that comes with that?
We have the.
Mr. Lawrence is here, he could probably respond to that?
The, the charge is possession of paraphernalia. Do you mean the penalty?
Yeah, what's the penalty?
So, the, all penalties in municipal court are, you know, up to a year in jail and a thousand dollars, $999 fine.
So, what do you think the, the typical penalty would end up being if, if someone had a, a needle on their, on their body, and so it's paraphernalia? Do they typically go to jail for a year for that?
I would say never.
So, it would be like?
But, you know, certainly, that's a question for the court and would depend on what kind of a, a record a person might have.
So, if we did change that to the needle stick prevention, then we wouldn't necessarily be pulling people that would go to jail, out of jail. We would just potentially lose a few dollars in our court system, but then could also keep our officers safe, so. Thanks, Zach.
Additional discussion? Ms. Hoppy?
Well, I'm just wondering, because I know Leah was the other, Leah was the one who, Ms. Dozeman was the one who brought it up, and Zach had supported her on this, so I was just wondering what maybe, what some of her opinions are on the suggestions that were made in the memo.
So, I, I really want to thank Zach for his hard work on this. So, this conversation originally came to be because the state legislator had drafted a bill and about the, the potential of having safe injection sites. The DEA stepped in and told them that it was illegal. Denver was still pushing for it, and it's my understanding that the sponsor of the bill has withdrawn, and it's not going to be coming at issue in this legislative session, and I don't foresee it in the near future. It's a hot-button topic, as we've seen with some of the recent Facebook posts. So, I do, I do think that the opioid crisis is something that we definitely need to be talking about. I know I myself have suffered a loss, a couple losses in, in substance abuse issues, and so I, I think as far as this memo goes, it's very thorough and has a lot of great first steps. I think it really does come down to education and getting folks the resources in which they can either go to rehab or, or get the help that they, that they need. I, I think I would be interested in knowing what kind of specific issues we are facing in this community. Is, is this something that you see a lot of in, in Wheat Ridge as far as like overdoses, accidental needle sticks? Do you have those statistics by chance?
Yeah, I have, I have a few numbers. We have fifty-four reported actual possible overdoses in 2018 and two deaths as a result of an overdose. There's various different causes of all those, alcohol, cough syrup, fentanyl, heroin, laundry detergent, methamphetamine, unknown prescription pills. So, they, they break down, and I've got a breakdown of all of those numbers, if you're interested in the specific number. The deaths, the two deaths that were associated, one was a fentanyl. That was a situation where EMS worked this person for an extended period of time, and, and the person died as a result of that. And then we had an overdose on prescription pills, but, and that was a person that was DOA, there couldn't even work that particular person, so. Ninety-eight calls that were associated with, that referenced heroin, and as I said, nine overdoses on heroin at the time, but no deaths associated with that. So, that's from 2018.
And, and when you come in contact with these folks, what measures are taken? Are there any resources offered to them, any recovery-type institutions that you refer them, to them to? Like, what, what is the process of, of encountering these kinds of incidents?
More than likely, it's, it's an overdose issue that's a medical issue, and there's not necessarily charges associated with that. If there's possession, if there's drugs that are there, a person can be charged with that, and I would say that, you know. And I would say that, you know, you run, you run a gambit of all different kinds of situations in those cases.
Mr. Lorenz, what is our capabilities in the, in the police department and the practice of having naloxone training and availability on this, on the street, I guess, with our field officers?
So, so there's a, there is the divided opinion on whether that's a thing for the police to do or not. Our, and our entire department has just gone through in-service, they're continuing, they're in, in the middle of in-service training. We have the Arvada Fire District that comes out and trains us. So Arvada's recommendation at this point is, is not to use Narcan at this time for police officers. So the issue is when, when people overdose, they stop breathing. And then as a result, they, they die of, of not breathing. So the recommendation of the fire department is to maintain an airway and keep them breathing. So we have, we're, we're purchasing, and this is as a result of the training that we've just completed. We've got bags for every single car. It's, it's called a, a bag valve mask, B V M. So each car has a B V M and will keep the person ventilated until EMS can get there. EMS in our jurisdiction is very quick and it provides the opportunity to have more people on scene that can help the person. How, how Narcan works is it, the heroin or the, you know, the opioid takes over the receptors in, in the cell, at the cellular, cellular level. When you use Narcan, it replaces those heroin molecules or the opioid molecules. So the person is no longer under the influence of that and they go immediately into withdrawal. And when you have a person that immediately goes into withdrawal and you're alone, it's, it's not a good thing. So the fire department's recommendation is maintain the airway, get some more help there, and then bring them around. There's also issues with training and cost of shelf life, maintaining, Narcan has to be at a, a constant temperature. So coming in and out of the car or leaving it in a police car, you, you don't want to do that. It will lose its effectiveness. So all, all that said, it, it's kind of a policy call. What, what is going to work better for each police department? The training is not difficult. We can do it in 15 minutes. We can obtain the, we can obtain Narcan. We can teach our officers to use it. It's, it's kind of a policy call at this point, which we have not done yet. Some agencies are doing it now, so.
Thank you. And, and Mr. Goff, do you know, do we have safe syringe disposal operations through any public facilities throughout the city?
We do in our municipal facilities, but I think Mr. Urban mentioned trails and parks. I don't believe we have them in those facilities. That could be something we could look at.
So.
Mr. Urban?
I'd like to make a consensus on several of these items and, and go from there. So I'd like to make consensus to promote the public awareness campaigns mentioned in the memo as well as the resources that are listed in the memo on the city website, as well as consider amending the section 16 dash 132 and 133 and supporting House Bill 19 dash 1009 and Senate Bill 19 dash 008.
Do we have consensus on that or questions?
Are you gonna, do you want to separate those a little bit, like maybe separate the House bills out and then?
So I'll, I'll start with supporting House Bill 19 dash 1009.
Okay.
We can do a, a letter of support or resolution to General Assembly. We normally have some kind of resolution template for that. So a support for House Bill 19 dash 1009.
Okay, so support for HB 1009. We have consensus on that.
And then Senate Bill 19 dash 008 Substance Use Disorder Treatment and Criminal Justice System. Support for that.
Looks like we have consensus on that. That's Senate Bill SB 19 double oh eight. Okay.
Amending section 16 of our code to conform with the needle stick prevention and drug paraphernalia law exemption.
Okay, we have consensus on that.
So I just want to clarify on that. I, I'm in general support of that, but I would, I would kind of defer to our police department and, and their feedback on that as well. I don't want to make a decision that would, you know, tie your hands in any way.
So the, the question is whether to charge people with paraphernalia if we give them the opportunity to admit that they have it. That's what we're doing now. I'm not aware that we've even, that we're even charging that. That, that is state law. So I don't, I don't think anybody is being charged with needle possession per se, other than the way it's written in the state law.
And the, the difference between state law and our law is that section 16 dash 132 specifically calls out possession of injection device. And that's separate from drug paraphernalia. And the state law also makes the distinction between a injection device that is full of drugs and that is still permissible to be charged with as opposed to a device that is nearly empty or appears to be empty. And, and the benefit of allowing that exemption is number one to, for the safety of our officers, but also encouraging those that are in treatment to continue in treatment versus getting thrown into the criminal justice system and further exacerbating their issues. So, so the amending our section, code section 16 to conform with state law, do we have a consensus on that?
We have consensus there.
And then the working to either increase the access to naloxone and safe disposal within the city. That doesn't necessarily mean with the police department. It could be with the West Metro Fire or another fire protection district or first responders. But the one thing that the city can do is to work on our safe syringe disposal program and understand how we can increase our ability to dispose of syringes safely.
And we have consensus on that.
Can I make a comment on that? I, I guess I would just want some more information on that because I know, coming from the healthcare industry, you know, those are pretty well monitored. The disposal containers and change frequently. So I think we need to be very intentional if we do something like that. Like for instance, I don't know that I find comfort in putting it in a, on a bike path, so to speak, or, you know, those types of things. So I, I would probably, you know, before, I mean, I'm sure that we would do homework around it, but I, I think that those types of things are pretty well monitored because we don't want, you know, kids messing around, getting into it and causing even more trouble because there's a safe disposal. So I'm, I'm all for looking into it, but I don't, I would want to be very clear on what methods we would take if and when we make those choices would be my only preference.
Yeah, I mean, right now they're lying on the sidewalk, so.
Yeah.
That's, you know.
Yeah, I know, but the big red containers.
So this would, this would be to investigate how we might do it safely and effectively and what locations.
And the maintenance of it and that type of thing.
And that doesn't mean necessarily that the city of Wheat Ridge staff or individuals are performing that activity. Could be a partnership with some other organization or.
But you're looking once again for consensus to have, to have some more, not necessarily well, discussion about this, but, but policy and procedures.
Just an understanding of how can the city of Wheat Ridge increase access to naloxone as well as increase access to safe syringe disposal. And then the, I think the last thing was the promoting the public awareness campaigns as well as the resources for treatment and the pharmacies that are available for drug take back and disposal and the information on the memo relating to the various resources onto the city website.
And does that have consensus? Yes, it does.
All right. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Urban, for bringing that. Does that conclude our discussion on that? Thank you. Is there any more business to come before the study session? Seeing none, then we will stand adjourned. Thank you.